Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
Well, second it.
Okay, we'll call trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trust trustee Lightev.
Lightev, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'm asking if there's anybody who has a disclosure or a conflict with any of the agenda items for this evening?
Lampier, I do not.
Stetser, I do not.
Keating, I do not.
Lightev, I do not.
Mayor Plummer, do you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I'm sorry, I do not. Plummer, I do not, sorry.
Hey, can I give a quick shout out to Dorothea and Marina for getting this up and running on Zoom? It was wonderful. For those who haven't used it, if you need, if you want, Dorothea, where are the, do you have to turn on the transcribing?
Um, yep. Let me turn it on.
You should very soon get a button at the bottom that says live transcript, and I'll put this in the chat as well. And if you click on that, you should be good to go. So thank you to Marina and Dorothea for making this happen. It makes a big difference for our community.
Yeah, and thank you also, Dan, for your help with the testing and the dry runs here. So, good evening, everybody, and thank you all for attending tonight. And just before we begin, I would like the village clerk to just remind us of guidelines for the meeting.
Okay. All right, the public may speak only during the public comment period of the meeting or at such other time as the majority of the board allows. Typically, the public comment period would be during public hearings after the board has authorized the board after motion, authorized the public to speak after motion. Speakers must, well, we're not going to step to the front of the room. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization, if any. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. See, speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information. All remarks must be addressed to the board as a body and not to a member thereof. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications. Okay, real quick, we have new abilities with Zoom, so for speakers, anyone wishing to speak, you can put, raise your hand. That'll let me know, and therefore we'll be able to address your comments during the public hearing or at any time the board allows comments. And there you go, and I can reach through chat.
Great. Thanks so much, Dorothea. We're going to just skip some of the reports on the agenda and do, just move them down a little bit. So we will start with an update on the Robert C. Corby Arboretum at Village, well, or Village Nature Reserve, Preserve, actually, not Reserve, Preserve. It's just a typo there. First of all, I'd like to thank, I believe Stacy Sheddin is here.
Yep.
Unmute.
Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yep, she is a Cornell Extension Master Gardener. And I'd like to thank Stacy and also Sandy G. Anini, who is another Cornell Extension Master Gardener. They walked the property last Friday. And Stacy prepared a report, and I thank her for that, just with observations and comments and with recommendations for moving forward. So, and also, just so you know, let's see who else walked with us. It was our building inspector Steve, or Code of Enforcement Officer Steve Lough, Zach Blyer from DPW, and also another resident who has done work with the Seneca Park Zoo, with working with pollinator gardens and other programs in horticulture. That was Sarah Hansen, who also attended. So Stacy, if you could just maybe fill us in on the background, I know the trustees have received your report in the last packet. Did you all get that? I hope you had a chance to take a look at the report. Okay. Stacy, if you could just fill us in then on just your observations and your thoughts in terms of how we move forward with our public land?
Well, we were a little taken aback at the hasty nature of the installation of the plantings. They were planted incredibly close together. Not well-planted, not weeded, not mulched. Some of them have died. It's sad, really, what has been done and the lack of preparation of the site. It's shocking, really.
Can you talk about some of the plants that were planted? I believe they were natives.
Most of them seem to be natives. The ones that I could identify, a lot of them are red and white oaks. There are swamp oaks, American hornbeam, witch hazels, some high bush blueberries, some Ohio buckeye, red elderberry. I'm going from memory. There may or may not have been a walnut in there. I'm not sure how good my tree identification skills are, really.
Well, that also was something that you brought to our attention, too, that the trees, not all the trees were tagged.
Oh, almost none.
Okay.
I found one tag. And that was on a red elderberry, which is a shrub. Great bird food.
Yeah.
Nice plant.
Great jam. So in terms of that and in terms of, you know, you mentioned site preparation. What would your recommendation, you know, be? I know there's different topography that is on the parcel. And you did mention also the site at the top of the hill where a number of the plants are planted. You had mentioned a PERC? PERC test?
Yes, the percolation test is basically you dig a hole and pour some water in it and see how long it takes to drain. If you have a large amount of clay in the soil, it's going to drain very slowly, and that will affect the ability of the plant to plant its roots to get air, which they need, surprisingly. They can drown in too much water if they're not adapted to that type of site. And most of them planted at the top of the hill are not water lovers. There are a number of shrubs and trees that are. But, you know, there's one swamp oak that I found up there, but white pines, those white pines are struggling. They're, they've got yellowing leaves already.
Yeah, we did, we did have a lot of rain, you know, early on.
Yes.
Okay, okay. In terms of, you know, let's just stay then at the, at the site at the top of the hill that you're speaking about and the drainage aspects, is there any other recommendations that you and Ms. G. Anini thought of for that particular area?
Well, it would be, because it's been raised bulldozed, it would be a great place for pollinator meadow. And there are a number of plants like the native bee balm, which is a lovely lilac color. It doesn't look anything like your, well, it looks a lot like your garden lilac colored bee balm. Perfect. New England asters, New York asters. Black-eyed Susans, oxide daisies. There's a number of full sun wet boggy plants that would love it up there.
Right, and they bloom at different times, which is kind of great for pollinators as well.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So you did see, I think, well, we did walk pretty much the whole site, so I, you did also were able to observe where there was a little bit of remediation that had been started with the knotweed.
Yes. And that's going well, but it's peeking out around the edges and it grows like knotweed. It takes over in a short, very short amount of time. It really doesn't take long to get a huge stand of it. It need, continue, you need to continue to work on that. If it is allowed to go to seed, it's just going to spread more. Basically, the whole parcel has become a weed patch. It's been neglected and it's been allowed to be overrun by these invasives that New York is plagued with. It's not just on that parcel.
Yeah.
You know, there's, my street has been overrun by invasives. It's, there's a fallow place. I'm in the town of Pittsburgh, but outside the village. And first, it was garlic mustard. The last couple of years, black swallowwort has moved in, and last year, there's a new, a new kid in town called Myla Minute. It's a version of knotweed. It's Persicaria. And then there's your basic honeysuckle weeds, the Japanese honeysuckle. There's only about five or six different invasive honeysuckles. So, just about any.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, so I know that both you and Ms. G. Anini found a number of invasives on the site, and you had mentioned that it was really essentially a longer-term eradication program over a number of years. Is that what I'm understanding?
That would be my guess. It's not something you knock out in a season, because there are seeds that lay dormant in the ground that will come back. And so care needs to be taken to identify new growth of these invasives and work needs to be done to eradicate them.
So in terms of like, you know, if you could help everybody here understand, you know, really your thoughts as to the process of, you know, what our next step should be and how this should, we should potentially proceed going forward. I think that would be helpful. Do we start planting again? Do we, you know, what are, what's the process?
I would say that the first thing to do is to work harder to eliminate the invasives. I wouldn't start planting until you have sites that are clear of invasives or that have invasives down to a manageable level, so that you can promote the growth of the natives while eradicating the invasives, giving the natives a chance to get hold, to take root and to flourish. 10 acres is a big site. And it might be a good idea to break it down into smaller parcels
Okay.
and concentrate on an area that can be planted now.
Okay.
And plant judiciously, but plant things that are appropriate for that site, for the soil conditions, for the light conditions, for traffic.
So with that in mind, then, you know, and as I'm reading through your excellent report, it's really about also, in addition to the first step of identifying and setting up a plan to eradicate invasives, it's really also about us getting a site plan.
Oh, yeah. Due diligence should be the first order of business on any development of any kind, even a nature preserve. You, it, you think, well, it would, should be easy. But, you know, unless you're dealing with an entirely blank slate of fallow farmland, there are going to be issues identifying the trees that are in there that are worth keeping, that are healthy, that, you know, add to the space, but that may be in danger of being strangled by Asian bittersweet.
Okay. And so in terms of the trees that are there now, that were the new ones that were recently planted, what are, what were your thoughts and also Ms. G. Anini's thoughts on that, just going forward? Knowing that, you know, we need to take care of invasives, we need to sort of match up the plant with the proper site and location on that parcel. What are your thoughts on, you know, the existing newly planted trees at this point?
Well, if you do nothing, you risk losing a lot of them, and that's throwing money away. I would try first to identify some that perhaps can stay where they are or could be moved quickly and nursed along, because we've had a very long dry spell lately. It's been two or three weeks without any rain. That's really stressing these plants also. So I would first identify if any can stay where they are. Dig up and possibly ball and burlap the most valuable ones, the most scenic, prettiest ones, like the buckeyes. And I think that you could probably find sites for the elderberries and blueberries, and possibly, if you have the resources to water them, to nurse them through dry spells, or put one of those water collars on them. Something like that. That might be the best thing for them. And Sandy suggested giving away the rest.
For our community.
What you can't plant.
Yeah. And we may be able to plant some also on village land, you know, elsewhere in our village.
Right, right. Other parks, you may have other sites where you've lost trees that recently that have had to be taken down for some reason. Creating an open space for one of these plants, either the village or the town.
Okay. And, you know, I know there's been some discussion about an arboretum and what would be a nature preserve, and maybe you could help us and speak to what the difference is, and also in terms of management and commitment levels in both instances. I think that would be helpful.
I think the best definition I've found of an arboretum is the museum for trees. Simply put, you want to be able to see each tree in its glory, at its full potential, unencumbered by being shaded by other trees. Highland Park is probably about the closest thing with the lilacs in there and the Pennidum, which spells, should be pronounced pine-tem to my mind, but it's Pennidum.
That's part of her collection, just so people know. That's.
Right.
Yeah.
And a nature preserve is a bit more wild. And it promotes wildlife, obviously. That's part of nature. You want to be able to see how it all works together.
Well, we did see foxes come out of their den when we were there.
Yep, we did.
I know.
That was special.
Yeah. Yep. Well, that's helpful. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Sheddin? Yes, Lily? Unmute?
I am doing that. Thank you. Well, thank you, Stacy. That was really an in-depth and very much appreciated opportunity to hear about your report. I didn't receive it until almost 5:00 today, so I apologize. I wasn't able to read it ahead of time, but your description really helped to fill me in. Was this, was this done gratis, this?
I believe so, yeah.
So I thank you very much for that. That is a very generous thing that you did for the village, and I appreciate that. So I would like to take a little time with your report in the next week or so and look it over, and I would be able to comment more thoroughly at that time. But everything that you have put forth here makes a, obviously, a great deal of sense. So I thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other thoughts or comments from the board members? Yes, Justin?
Sure. Yes, Stacy, I would also like to thank you for your detailed report. As with Lily, I think that I just got this in my inbox at 3:41 today, and so I appreciate your presentation and certainly didn't want to cut that short. I believe this board, so that we can properly consider the matters in front of us, I believe that we have a policy that we don't add items to the agenda after the Friday preceding the meeting. And so I understand that we wouldn't really be able to take any action on this today. But it does seem like a useful piece of information to, to consider, and I think that we can put this together with other materials that we've, we've collected about the area. The, I did want to touch on one other issue of the arboretum versus nature reserve, and the, this board, of course, adopted a resolution previously with the, the name arboretum included in the name, and I understand that's the formal decision of this board. So we could certainly consider a change. The distinction is, as I was researching that a little bit in preparation for this meeting, is, it seems to me that it also involves, you know, whether it's going to be an educational space or if it's going to be something for endangered types of species and plants. So I think that, you know, there's, there's more to consider there. And I'd like to prepare more materials before we consider any kind of a name change, but thank you again for, for your presentation.
My pleasure. Yes, Dan?
So real quick, just to follow on on what Justin said. Justin, I agree with everything you said. However, there are times that's an agenda item comes in at the last minute that we have to deal with at a certain time. So there's no policy that says we can't. It's just a best practice to give us time to review the material. The way you phrased it, it made it sound like we're absolutely unable to vote on it. We could if we wanted to. So just wanted that point of clarification.
Thanks, Dan. You know, also, I think, you know, since not everybody had a chance to really, you know, read the report from Ms. Sheddin, you know, it's, I think everybody probably needs an opportunity to do so. You know, Lily said she really hadn't had a chance to go through the report, so. And also, Stacy, if we may, I'm sure additional questions will come up. We don't want to, you know, keep you too much longer here. But maybe, maybe reach out to you just with some follow-up questions from the board, perhaps before our next meeting.
Oh, absolutely. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, okay, thank you. That, that's really great. That's helpful. You, the master gardeners are just such a tremendous resource from the Cornell program. Yes, Dan?
A real quick, in all my haste to talk about policy and process, I forgot to thank Stacy and Sandy for the, for the work, and really appreciate you taking care of things that we care very much about. So thank you. Really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Great. Are there any other thoughts or comments from the board or? Okay, Dorothea, anything?
I don't have any comments to share. We're just going back over some settings here.
Okay, okay. We're still kind of getting our sea legs with all, with all of this. Well, Stacy, thank you so much. And also thanks to Sandy G. Anini as well for really helping us out here and really helping us to understand the level of commitment that's required to really protect our, our public lands. So we'll be in touch with you, and thanks again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see, what time is it? Oh, we have 15 minutes?
Well, we, Jeff is waving his hand.
Oh, Jeff's waving his hand. I can't see Jeff. I'm sorry. Yes.
Go ahead.
So I, I skipped my attorney, or you skipped my attorney report, because we decided that would be fine. But we could talk about the RG&E thing for a little bit if you want to.
Sure. That would be good, actually. Thank you.
All right. So I think Dorothea circulated to everybody the, the letter from RG&E, which talks about the, their the ongoing negotiations with Computel. It was kind of a nasty Graham letter, but the bottom line was they're looking for Computel to tell them they have the authority to negotiate for our village. So I don't know, I haven't been in the loop big time on this, but I don't know what they have right now from us, but I think the next appropriate step would be to find out, either Dorothea or Mary, to find out if they do think they need such a resolution from the board to give them the authority to act. So I think the next step is a reach out, and once we hear back from them, we can, the board can fully understand what the process is and what the board might be doing by way of resolution. From my perspective, they're the people with the expertise on this. The board and I and Mary and Dorothea do not have the expertise, and I think we'd be relying on them anyway to do the best deal we can. So, and they, they have represented us in the past and done a very good job. So I think that the action item would be just to authorize Dorothea or Mary, whoever, Dorothea thinks from the clerk's office, to make contact and Computel to ask them that question.
Yeah, you know, in the past, I'm trying to remember, Mary, what was it that, we got something like over $100,000 back because we were overcharged by RG&E? Or I'm trying to remember what that was, or Dorothea, maybe?
Um, I can jump in there. Thanks. Oh, there she is. Go ahead, Mary.
No, go ahead, because you were, you have a better handle on it. I, I'm.
In the past, the village worked with Computel to review all our contracts with utilities to make sure we weren't being overbilled.
Correct.
What was issue, our gross receipts were collected, any revenue due us. And with reviewing our RG&E bills, they found that we were being overcharged on streetlights. They conducted a village-wide audit that ended up netting us about $117,000 worth of refund. So working with Computel in the past has worked to our favor.
I think there's been two occasions where that's happened, and I think the first one, there was like $38,000 that came through, then the second time, 117. So yes, that is correct, and it would be in our best interest to see if we can get more money.
Oh, yes, Lily, yes.
I'm sorry. Was, was this letter in our packet? Because I did not see it.
No, I think there's some confusion. I thought it was sent out. We will get that out to you. Does everybody understand the issue with RG&E and Computel and what we're looking at with the gross utilities?
No, I didn't, I didn't get the letter, so it would help a great deal if I could see the letter. I don't object to having Dorothea and Mary represent the village and look into it further, but I certainly would appreciate also seeing the, the letter.
We'll make sure you get that. That's an oversight.
Yeah, we'll send it out to you in the morning to everyone.
Um, Mayor Plummer, would you like me to give a quick overview of what?
Yeah, just what Computel does and that they're working potentially with 90 villages, I think he said.
Yep, I believe Jeff verified that with the correspondence. What this is, there was a time, I'm going to guess, Mary can correct me, about 10 years ago, when we used to get gross utilities from RG&E, which included delivery and the charge of the service. So the rates, we would receive 3% of total. At one point, RG&E decided that delivery wasn't part of that calculation, and they removed that funds from the, what we received. This has been something that has gone to the utility commission. Everybody's been working, trying to get RG&E to start giving those funds back to the municipalities and have not been successful. So apparently now Computel is working with RG&E, trying to negotiate this on, as we said, over 90 villages or municipalities total to try to receive some of these funds back. So this is hoping for a settlement of, I'm going to guess about 10 years' worth of income we were due.
Right, it should be relatively significant. Right. It should be relatively significant. Yes.
Oh, thanks for that. Great. Do you want to, does everybody want to wait to see the letter before we take action? I mean, Dan, you're nodding. I see Dan nodding. Yes.
Well, I mean, yeah, unless it's an emergency, in which case Dorothea engaging is fine.
Well, if we get the correspondence out to you tomorrow, are you okay with me just reaching out to Computel to see if there's a resolution or something they need for the board so we can start this process? Cause as we say, it is a significant amount of money we could possibly gain from this. And obviously, any amount of money we can bring in helps our reserves, helps the village and whole.
I mean, I think once you see the letter, you'll understand. I, you know, my, my sense is, you know, I, I think it, there's money out there, potentially with our name on it. So, you know, I think it's an opportunity. And just to have, you know, Dorothea and Mary, you know, simply follow up at least on this. Yes, Jeff?
It's not really an action item that they're doing. You know, and the board is not taking any action on this. We're just trying to set up the next steps. So once the board fully reviews both the letter and what Computel says they need, then the board will be in a position to act. I mean, this is not, not talking about getting a check next week. This is talking about laying the foundation for Computel, possibly laying the foundation for Computel to negotiate for the village.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I think it all, that all makes sense. So any, any other comments or thoughts from the board? Okay, so why don't we proceed with that? We do have a few more minutes before the public hearings. What about if we, we have some gentlemen here, I believe, from Monroe Golf Club to talk about the Monroe Invitational?
Mason.
Yeah, Mason, I believe, and I think Mason and maybe somebody else. I'm not sure.
Hey there, it's Mason here. Yeah, the other one, Zach McCarthy.
Okay.
Hi, guys.
Hi, how are you guys?
Hi.
How are you?
Welcome.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks so much.
So can you, I mean, I think the background material with the flyer, I believe, was sent out to everybody.
Good.
So maybe you could give, just give everybody a little bit of background, particularly people attending the meeting.
Sure, not a problem at all. So this is Mason Grower here. I'm the chair of the event. This is the 80th playing of the Monroe Invitational. It's a internationally known amateur golf event. Back in the 90s was really kind of was when it was in its heyday. Tiger Woods came to play. Some really big names have come through the area to play in the Monroe Invitational. And it's been getting more challenging, probably in the last 10 years, to get the top players because the calendar kind of moved away from us. So we'd always been the first week of June, a beautiful time in Rochester. But the West Coast was still in final exams. The US Open qualifying was then, and basically the field just started to slip a little bit. And what's gone on at Monroe in the last year is the club really wants this to be back on the map again, right? To be arguably considered a top 25 event in the world. Rochester itself is a golf crazy town, right? We'll have between Oak Hill, CCR, Monroe and all of the other courses. I mean, it's just a rich, rich community of, of interest in golf. And we think the opportunity exists to, to put a big push on. And the key, we think, to being successful and accomplishing this goal is to actually recruit the community itself and lean into one of the strengths of Rochester, which is its golf heritage and its golf community and, you know, people's passion for the game. And we're doing everything we can. We've partnered with the RDGA this year, so they're going to run the operations of the event. And, and, you know, they themselves have a community of 18,000 people across Rochester who, who support and participate in all types of RDGA events. And we're hoping to have some of those people come out during the week and watch these players. And yeah, these are really top players in the world. We're going to have 30 or 40 of the top 500 players anywhere.
Can you give us, okay, there's the date of the event. Also, what can we do to help you?
Yeah, so the biggest ask, and the way we got there was I just, I saw Dan passing one day and, and brought it up. But, you know, the village is such a central part to probably any person's experience, it's going to be playing in this event. We're hoping to have between 80 and 100 kids from all over the world. They're probably coming with their families, possibly coming with some friends. And, you know, they're going to be staying in and around the village. They're going to be eating at restaurants in the village. And we think it would be an amazing experience for them to be able to walk down the streets and see big banners and signs showing that the village, you know, understands that they're there and appreciates the fact that they're there. And it would just make them feel pretty special.
So you're, you're interested in having banners hung up in the village? And we've done that in the past. And also, you know, hopefully, you know, reaching out to our businesses, which I think the businesses would be delighted to maybe do some joint promotions with you folks. It'd be wonderful to support our, our.
We are absolutely open to any possibilities that, that people would be interested in. You know, the desire is there to, to open it up and include as many people as we possibly can.
Right. And so the banners, what, when would you want these banners to go up to promote the event?
So Zach, are you there? Sorry, Zach's the, the head of media and marketing for the event. And I would defer to him on time, location, size, all that stuff.
Thanks, Mason. So the biggest thing that, like Mason had touched on is obviously, we want to build up, we want to build the perception of what this tournament is, really is to our community around the, you know, around the village, you know, around Pittsford and the surrounding areas. But Pittsford, the village itself being the central location, being so close right in the backyard, we felt that it would make a lot of sense to do banners on the light poles down throughout the village and hopefully down closer to Pittsford Dairy if possible as well. Timing wise, I feel it would probably be advantageous for us to put them up the week prior, maybe two weeks prior, depending on what, how that would meet your, your schedule. I mean, I understand that it's coming off of the Fourth of July holiday. I don't know if there is a, if you guys are already going to have signage up there for the holiday. I'm, I mean, I'm 100% sure, but that would likely at least get some buzz going that, you know, we have this tournament coming. And, you know, it's a, it's a free event to the public. They can come and they can walk the grounds and they can watch these, these kids that are likely going to be playing. And a lot of them be playing in the US amateur and it's going to be nationally televised this summer. Last, our last, that last time we had this event, when 2019, the winner of the event, Andy Ogletree from Georgia Tech went on to win the US amateur and then went on to be the low amateur at the Masters.
Okay, so, thank you. Thanks for that. No, it sounds really exciting and I'm not even a golfer, but it does sound pretty great. So we also have our Zach, Zach Blyer. Zach, typically, how many banners do we put up and what sizes?
It varies on how many we put up. We do have plenty of poles to put them on. But it all depends on how much money wants to be spent on panic. So I guess that would be up to these guys. Size wise, I would say nothing wider than two, two feet, 24 inches by 60 inches.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because Mr. Blyer will be coordinating with you folks regarding banners. Are there any other comments or thoughts from the board on this? Dan and then Jeff.
Trustee Laffier also had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. There you are, Lily. Okay.
Yeah, could we take that white off the screen, please, so that we can have the screen back?
Sure.
Thank you so much. There we go. Okay. Who's speaking first? I don't know who was recognized.
Why don't we do Dan and then Lily and then Jeff? How's that?
Thank you.
Mason and Zach, this sounds terrific. Up, I'm the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. And at our last meeting, let them know about this. It'd be a good idea for you to come into the next meeting with them. And I'll, I'll reach out offline because they're going to want to know and I'm sure they're going to want to help.
Perfect.
Great. Okay. Is that, okay, thanks, Dan. Yes, Lily?
Yes. Yes, thank you so much for your exciting presentation. I have several questions. One is, are you supplying the banners?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. And are there corporate sponsors on the banners?
No.
And do you have a size for the banners?
Well, so we didn't before. I'm going to take Zach's guidance on 24 by 60. Is that roughly the right?
I have not, I don't know about some of the ones that we've done in the past, but typically the ones we've done in recent years, and I, I know I have been intending to put this on the, on the book so that we have uniformity with any banners that we place. But the, the most recent banners are actually smaller than that. And you can see them on State Street in the village. And the largest I think we've done is 24 by 36 typically. So there's that. Would you also be supplying the holders that hold the banners to the light poles? Because that is an expense that I do not think that the village would be willing to incur. I'm just.
Yeah, it certainly our intention that the village not have to incur any costs.
Okay, thank you.
We're not asking the village to, to pay for anything.
Okay. And how many banners are you proposing?
But again, we don't, we don't know. I'm just not familiar. I mean, we're going to have to get with Zach, I suppose, and, and just get a sense of what is normal. Or what even, what even is possible.
Yeah.
I think it would be as many as is, you know, sort of sensible and clear.
Okay, well, that sounds like it would certainly merit a discussion, I would think.
Do you have a view of what you would prefer?
To have the banners placed? I think that's a board decision. And also, the number of, the, the number of banners also placed would be a board decision. And then, and then we have to be practical as well because the DPW is going to be putting them up, which does take, and taking them down, which does take time. And they have a very limited staff and, and busy schedule. So previously, I think for anything like the farmer's market, Village Farmers Market comes to mind. We had the VFW had banners for a period of time. Candlelight Night. In all of those cases, I do not believe there were more than eight banners placed throughout the village. As, as an example, I just want to throw that out as our precedent.
Zach, you measured some banners today that had gone up and they were how big?
24 inches by 60 inches. Those were the Save the Frog Day banners.
Oh, it's the frog, frog. Okay, thank you. And then Lily, anything more? Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to point out that our sign code does provide for this. It's a two-week window before, two days after. Although I suppose there's some wiggle room on that. But it really is a building inspector function. He's the one that does the permit. He's the one that approves the placement, location. Presumably Steve would like to hear opinions from the Board of Trustees on that issue. But this is a, it, it isn't, it isn't a trustee action item. It's a code enforcement, building inspector function.
Steve, did you have any thoughts on that?
I'd say the best thing to do would be to, to walk the village. Have Mason or Zach or somebody, let's walk the village. Let's look at locations, the things that they think would work. And then I can, you know, Zach and I can look at it and say, yeah, that's a good spot or, or to work for the village and work for them.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yes, sir. That's perfect.
So I, I think we have a plan of action to move forward and I'm, I'm excited about the event. I think it'll be great. You know, I think we're all trying to get on the other side of a pretty tough year. And this is something that's fun and will bring people into our community.
Thank you all for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, Mason, this is Steve again. Yeah, I'll get ahold of you or you call me and, and set up a time we can walk the village in the next week or so, so you can start, you know, planning how many and, and where.
I'll give you a call in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we're, we're at the time for our public hearings. Our first item is the special permit for neutral grounds. Any board comments? Anybody get a chance to take a look?
I did. I love it.
Who doesn't love a cup of coffee?
And in, in a prime spot.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be great to see that spot activated, actually. Okay, if there's no comments from the board, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that. Laffier?
Roll call. Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Trustee Laffier?
Laffier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, are there any comments from the public regarding this matter? If there are, we need your name and address for the record. Any questions coming in?
I would ask you to raise your hand using the screen. If you look at the bottom of your screen, there's a raise your hand function.
I'm hearing crickets. Okay.
Going once.
All right. I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Keating, second.
Roll call. Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Trustee Laffier?
Laffier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board for any additional comments or if somebody wants to make a motion?
Just so the board knows, the applicant is here as well and I did promote her so she can speak if you have any questions.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much. I'm really excited. The community that's walking by is so excited. People are popping in. Some of you guys have popped in. And so now that this step is behind me, I'm going to move forward. I do have two questions. One is, can I hang a temporary banner on the front of the building that says Neutral Ground Coffee House coming this summer? That's question number one. And question number two, does the village or town have any bike racks available? Obviously, a big part of my demographic is bikers. I'm putting Adirondack chairs out front, but bike racks, I, I'm just wondering if there are any available. If there's not, I'll, I'll get my own, but I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say maybe the first question, well, Renee, why don't you speak to bike racks and then Steve can speak to signage?
You might, I know the town puts some out for, I don't believe we have any extra. We just purchased one for Shane Place to go along with the, the other one near the pavilion last year. And, but the town puts them out for paddle and pour. They usually have a bike corral, bike parking, and they might have some extras. And Zach may be able to, to speak some more about this, but they might be able to loan you one indefinitely.
Oh, okay. Steve, did you want to just speak to, to the signage?
Yeah, Mary Ann, you'd have to come in and get a temporary sign permit.
Okay. All right. So what, Steve, what's the steps for doing that? Should I just, is there something I download and fill out or?
Yeah, you can go on the, the website, Government Forms and Documents, Building Inspector, Building Permit Application.
Okay, I will do that. It's going to be small. I'm going to have a graphic designer do it. I have my logo, which you guys have seen on my mood board. And so it's going to be very tasteful. And if you need me to, I can submit what it's going to look like. I don't want it to be huge and ominous, but it, it will help the community understand what's going on there.
Yeah.
A lot of interest.
Yeah, a rendition. Yeah, a rendition of it along with the application would be a good thing.
Okay, I will do that.
Yeah, yes, Renee.
One more thing, I just realized with the building of the pavilion there, that the, have the bike racks moved, Zach? And do we have any extra?
Um, there is still a bike rack down there. I have not had a chance to stop and then really take a look at what's going on.
But just the one bike rack? Cause we had two, side by side.
Yeah, so since this topic came up tonight, now I'm kinda curious what's going on with the bike racks down there. So I'll, I'll go down there and take a look. Um, we don't have any on hand that we would be able to share, because we just don't have any. But there is the one that is across the street, next to the pavilion, at the east end of the path.
Okay, thanks. Yes, Lily?
Thank you. Yes, Mary Ann, I'm anxious for you to open as well. I'm looking forward to it. I would like to also ask our attorney. Jeff, is it possible for the Village to put our bike racks on private property? Or would they have to be placed on public property in proximity to a business?
Um, I think that's a good point. I think if there are our bike racks, they ought to be on our property, but we have property pretty close to there, don't we?
Right, I think we, I believe we do. So it wouldn't be directly on, but it could be adjacent to.
I mean, don't we have, we, we have that whole right of way, don't, isn't there right of way portion? Not right of way, but.
Between the two buildings?
No, 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 I'm talking about right across the street with the canal.
Oh, yeah, the canal, yes, and the pavilion there.
I mean, the canal.
I don't know if you guys can see me, but I'm raising my hand. I see all of you, but um, I have noticed recently that a lot of people are currently, if they go to Level Seven, lean their bikes up against my front porch, which my, it's not mine, but you know what I mean? The front porch, and I, that's totally fine, but I just, you know, would, bike racks are real, like, good bike racks that people can lock their bikes to are really expensive. And so that's why I threw that question out there, because I, I anticipate it being a popular biking stop.
That's a really good point. Zach, you were gonna add something, I thought?
Yeah, so like I was saying about the bike rack that is already next to the pavilion on the path. It, I think it stores like three or four bikes at best. There really isn't a whole lot of room over there to put more bike racks, just because it sticks out into the way of pedestrian traffic. But to the west of the building, there is a little bit of a right of way there that approaches onto the Powers' property. We may be able to put something there. There's a curb cut leading up to one of our electrical boxes.
Oh, right.
Yeah, if we came up with a plan, I'm sure we could put something there.
That was exactly the spot that I was thinking about. That's exactly what you said is exactly what I was thinking about, Zach.
I think there's enough room to get all the bikes off the sidewalk without being on Powers' property. It might be a good spot.
Okay, well, like I said, I threw it out there because I really wanna encourage bikers to stop there, but I want something sturdy and safe that they can lock their bikes to or put their bikes at. So I'm hoping that the Village could help me out with that.
Okay, well, you know, we can, yes, Justin?
Sorry, this is not on the bike topic, so if there's anything else to be said on that, I can wait.
Oh, no, I was just saying, saying that, you know, Zach has some ideas. Renee, maybe you can chime in, and, you know, we could move forward and take a look at, you know, possibilities. Yes, Jeff?
Have, have we thought about contacting the, the property owner? It seems like there's a demand for bikes in his property. Maybe the property owner would like to foster that demand in the, in the businesses down there.
I think that's a great idea. I actually wrote it down, too. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, you know, may not just.
Wait a minute, this is being recorded, right? I, I believe, we've made note of the fact that I had this one, a good idea this year, right? I wanna be on record.
Excellent synapse, thank you. Yes, Steve?
All right, two things. Where is the hand raised thing on the screen for anybody who needs it? I don't see it.
It's at the bottom of your screen. If you look down where it says Participants, Q and A, Chat, Share Screen, you should see a raised hand at the lower part. You maybe you don't see Share Screen.
No, I see Participants, Q and A, Chat, Share Screen, Record Live Transcript. That's it.
I think that's because you're a panelist.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have all those choices.
The attendee will see.
It's only for the, the attendees, not the panelists.
Okay, the other thing, Mary Ann, when you get a chance tomorrow, give me a call, please, tomorrow, because I did want to talk to you about the neighboring property and what Jeff is suggesting with the owner, and just some possibilities or, or some thoughts on, on parking for events, things like that.
Oh, that's great. I will definitely be reaching out to you tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, yes, Justin?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Mary Ann, for the, the application, and, and it looks like a really exciting prospect in, in the Village. I was just looking over the, the code, and perhaps this is a question for Jeff. Do we need, it says under 21035 dot four that we need a statement of findings. Is, is that something that we've gone over, that we would prepare afterwards, or should we discuss some of those?
It would not hurt to have them in the record, but we could prepare them afterwards. I mean, if there were, if there were key finding, or key thoughts about findings around that section, it would be good to put them on the record, and then they can always be fleshed out as a statement of findings.
Is that something you wanna do?
Well, I, you know, I wish in retrospect that we'd had some time to prepare those prior to the meeting. I, I don't have those right now, but I think that in terms of setting precedent, you know, we all might be in favor of this idea. But I think that it's good to make sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's and, and going over our, our code. Maybe we could just go over a couple of items here, glancing down the list. We've, we've got things like conformance with the comprehensive plan and LWRP. Adequacy of off-street parking, access trash management. We've talked about trash management in the application, I think. Compatibility of proposed use, the, the list that we've gone down a, a bunch of times on this board, I think.
Thank you. Yes, Lily?
Keep pushing that microphone on my picture like that's gonna do something. I should have known after the 50th time that it doesn't work that way. I'm sorry, the LWRP, Jeff, is that something that requires the, the PCBA?
No, this is a type two application.
Okay, so that we would be able to?
Yes.
Answer the question for LWRP. Thank you very much.
Type two, and it doesn't say Local Water, Water Revitalization Program, not our local waterfront consistency law.
Okay.
Which is a distinction, but this is, if it were a type one or an unlisted action, it would require the LWC review, but it is not, so it doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? And it's, it's identified as a type two unlisted action. Does anybody wanna make a motion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for Neutral Ground Coffee House.
Lanfear, second. I would, shall we add that we will be placing findings also with that? And will there be any conditions that the trustees are interested in adding to this application? That's a question.
Yes, Jeff?
I, I mean, I would suggest that, just generally glancing through the, the considerations in 21035.4, this application seems to dot most of those. And that would be a general finding that it meets the, generally meets the considerations. And if the board wishes, then we can flesh out those considerations with a, a written finding statement. But that finding in and of itself, and the fact that it's gonna be recorded in the Village Clerk's office, if the vote for this is affirmative, is the writing probably required by this section?
So the motion would be amended to state that the permit is, how would we say that, meets the considerations of, of that part of the code?
I don't, I don't think we need that as part of the motion.
Okay.
We just, we just, you know, that's just on the record.
It's just on the record. Okay, that's great, then. So we have a second?
Yeah, okay, ready for roll call? Trustee Stetzer?
I do, I just realized I glanced at the hours again. I don't wanna waylay us here, but I'm wondering if we would like, if she would like to expand those hours, she'd have to come back in, again. And I'm wondering if we would like to consider broadening those hours a little bit. Right now it's 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday. Like extending it to 7:00 PM, just so she wouldn't have to, to come back in. Or, I'm open, it's just, the hours seem a little restrictive.
Well, she's gonna be having catered events as well, if I'm understanding you, Mary Ann.
Yes.
Her hands up, I'm seeing it.
I know, I figured this out. So, yes, I, as described in my business plan summary that I submitted to you guys, the left side of the building is a venue space for, you know, parties up to wherever. I don't know, I gotta talk to Steve about the capacity, between 50 and 60 people. So, you know, if there's a holiday party, or a corporate event or something like that, you know, I don't want, I don't want them to last past nine o'clock. So if my hours could be extended from seven to nine, with the intention that daily I'm only gonna be open from, from seven to three, that would be great. And Renee, you brought that up last time, and I really appreciate you bringing it up again.
Yes, Lily?
Thank you. As part of a discussion regarding that extension of hours, I think one of the conditions that allowed us to, or made it more amenable, this application, was the fact that it was staggered with other businesses in the area. There would be no competing for the limited parking that you find there with several other restaurants, that's their busy time. So it didn't trigger any issues, sight line issues regarding parking, but it might, if there was an overlap, if there's only so many parking spaces, and everyone can't point to those same parking spaces in, in each application. So we would need, I think, further information regarding special event parking for the 50 or 60 cars that might be all coming at one time, for instance, for an event, and how that would be accommodated, especially given that there's two other restaurants and a brewery in that's using that same parking. So that, I think that's something that we, as trustees, might wanna look at. The way it stands now, there doesn't seem to be any conflict with the parking, but it did put expanded hours might create that conflict. What are the other board members' thing?
Thank you. Steve, you have your hand up, yes?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things what I wanted to talk to Mary Ann about, Lily and the board. It's something I, I came up with a thought today to talk to the owners of RPS and, and the property next door. So is it something that Mary Ann could come back and, and possibly modify the hours if we could secure different parking for events?
Yeah, valet or something, too.
But, you know, don't, then, nobody uses the RPS parking lot, the dirt parking lot over there during the weekend. So if she has an event, nobody's there, and we could secure some deal, or Mary Ann could, you know, to use that parking lot, so she wouldn't even use anything at 50 State Street, everything would be next door.
So it's a future option. Yes, Mary Ann, I see the hand up.
Thank you. So my intention is actually going to talk to the people that the Powers' I, I haven't reached out to them yet, because I wanted to make sure that this was all happening. But I'm willing to pay them rent for parking in those, in what Steve's talking about, the dirt parking lot, for special events. And obviously, provide them, you know, insurance, you know, additionally insured and all of those things. So that's my intention, is to reach out to them for, you know, additional parking and put, you know, signage up or whatever, that's special event parking, or, I don't know.
That's something you could potentially work out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so unless there's additional comments, we, we do have a motion and a second.
Okay, so we're gonna let, I'm sorry, we're gonna let that stand, the motion, as it was, and not, without the extension of hours, with the understanding that Mary Ann will come back at a later date, once she has secured the lease for that, and we'll talk about the extended hours at that time.
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we ready for roll call? Okay, trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
All right.
Oh, yay!
Mary Ann, Mary Ann, other than this, what, what can we do to help your business?
Oh, geez, I don't know, lower the cost of lumber.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, the cost of materials is just so over the top, so I'm pushing through it, and I'm gonna provide something that the Village of Pittsburgh that is gonna be really proud of. I promise you all.
That's wonderful, Mary Ann. We're all looking forward to it. Thanks again.
Thank you all.
Okay, next up, there is a public hearing on a local law regarding speed limits. Dorothea, did you wanna? We, we, what is it, we don't have a number on it, do we?
No, I sign those afterwards.
Okay, so local law modifying chapter 195 of the code of the Village of Pittsburgh.
For speed limits, yep.
For speed limits, yep. Any, any comments from the board? Renee, is there, do you have any deep insights before we?
We know, well, we've had a lot of questions from people about why 2025, and that's the, the state limit. That's all we can do right now. And we know that by lowering speed limits, it gives drivers more reaction time, it makes it safer, it makes it more likely that a pedestrian or a cyclist, if there is a crash with a, a vehicle, that they're more likely to survive. So just, these are livable streets. I know people like to drive through here like it's a highway, but every little one of these things helps change the culture to remind people that people live around here, remind drivers that people live around here, particularly those that, that are in the Village.
Great, yeah, thank you, Renee. Yes, Dan?
The only question I had was on South, because South is currently at 20, and in the law it says 25. Do we need to amend that? It's in Section A.
Jeff, you wanna handle that one?
Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, I would, I, I, I think we'll just leave it the way it is, because state law, the proposed local law, I, I, we can have an attorney-client session on what's to do on South. But right now, state law is such that 30 miles an hour is the mandated speed limit, and limited exceptions are permitted to go down to 25. But I, I don't wanna really go into it in any more detail than that. If the board wants more information, I can send an email, or we can have an attorney-client session.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Justin?
I just wanted to say thank you to trustee Stetzer, as, as well as Jeff, for their help in, in preparing this local law and spearheading this issue.
It's important, and we're going in the right direction, even if, you know, we wanted it to be lower. 25 is better than what it is now, so I think it's, it's positive for our residents and. and hopefully will be, as Renee said, one more incremental step to keeping our pedestrians and bicyclists safe. Any other comments or thoughts from the board? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd love to make a motion.
Yeah, you make a motion. It's her law.
I will make a motion. We don't have, you're not, we don't have the number yet, right, Dorothea?
Oh, you need to open the public hearing.
What am I thinking? I completely?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, there we go. Is there a second?
Matt, you're second.
Roll call, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lickab?
Lickab, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Please take your hand up, or any questions, or hands raised, or?
I'm waiting.
We ask that they use the raise hand button provided by Sue.
Okay. Yeah, I like that. I see the hand.
Yeah, motion network for the board members.
It works for me as a co-host, just ignore Dorothea.
It works for me, too.
Yeah, I can see it in my screen. Okay.
No comments.
Okay. They're all excited about 25 miles an hour.
It's a very sexy topic.
It's an important one, though, and I think it's really, I'm glad for this. So I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Matt, you're second.
Lily just gotcha. Okay, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lickab?
Lickab, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, any additional comments from the board, or is there a motion maybe that Renee would like to make?
I'll make a motion, that we adopt local law, the local law modifying chapter 195 of the village code regarding speed limits on designated village roads.
I'll second the motion, trustee Keating.
Okay, roll call, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lickab?
Lickab, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, that's great. Thanks again, Renee and Jeff, really, for your work on this. This is, this is great. It's a really positive step for our community, definitely. Okay, oh, next up, we need to set a public hearing for a short-term retail application for the village farmer's market. Is there anybody here to speak to that, or?
I'm not sure if they were attending or not.
Yeah.
Steve, are you aware?
I don't see Putnam, he's, he's the guy, right? I don't see him on here.
I think it's similar to last year.
Well.
Lily's question.
Was I recognized?
Yes, you were.
Thank you, thank you. I think we can just set the public hearing, and then we can then hear from, from them at the next, when they're here to present for, to the public. Because I'm gonna assume that they'll have all of their permits and so forth from the town and everything.
Yeah.
That they need. Okay, perfect.
Alrighty.
We have a raised hand from Mike Reynolds. I don't know if we're ready to set that date.
Um, this, I believe, Mayor Plummer, we are looking for a special date on this for a special meeting because of the delay.
Yep.
When are they trying to open? Did it say in the application?
Yeah, let me, here.
They're looking to, sorry.
July 10th, there it is. Okay, so a little time, yeah.
Steve, wasn't they trying to open sooner than that? We can't hear you, you're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, July 10th, they were trying to open then, and our next meeting, scheduled meeting, wouldn't be till the following week.
Yeah, we're actually delayed because we go to one meeting a month, as in June. So we wouldn't have a meeting until July 13th to allow it to happen. I don't have enough time for posting between now and then for the June meeting, for the public hearing. So the thought was maybe the board would be willing to entertain a special meeting on June 22nd to
Yes.
Get this application forward.
Yep, I'm for that.
We can make it quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Same as last word, Dorothea.
I had to say it. I had to try. Um, so I'm just gonna pull and make sure all the board is good. Trustee Stetser, are you good for June 22nd?
Yes.
Trustee Lickab?
Yes.
Trustee Lampier?
Yes.
Trustee Keating?
Yeah, it works for me, thank you.
Mayor Plummer. Okay, that, and I'm gonna assume we want to go with the 6:30? I already had my quorum. Okay, now you can set your public hearing.
Um, let's see, what's next on this? Oh, a discussion on the policy?
Nope. We need to set the public hearing. I was just getting a poll.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I confused you, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion for the public hearing?
Somebody would like to make a motion, okay. Lily made the motion.
I did.
I'll second it.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lickab?
Lickab, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye, to confirm this, June 22?
Yes.
Looking at my calendar, okay, thanks. 6:30, thank you.
Yep, Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes, thank you, sorry for the confusion.
Yep, it's me.
Mostly it's me.
Okay, so next up, a discussion on policy for, regarding banners for village hall? Anybody? Lily?
Is your intention to discuss setting, creating a policy at this time? Or just ideas for a policy, or could you elaborate a little bit?
Well, it's what came before the board last time. And so I know, you know, Dan had, had some thoughts on this as well, maybe you want to chime in?
Yeah, I mean, currently there is no policy, and it's at the discretion of the mayor and the board.
Right, and Jeff also had done some research, and you, we, I believe the information was sent around from the discussion, Jeff, that you had with Wade Beltramo from NICOM.
Yeah, it was really just a very quick email exchange, but my, my email to him was fairly explicit. Basically, the village can display whatever flags and banners that it owns that it wants to, provided that it meets with board approval as to policy and statement. It's a board-sponsored banner or flag. It's not a, would not be on application to or by any group. If, if, if someone wanted to donate a flag, for instance, or a banner, the board would have the choice of accepting that gift or rejecting that gift, and displaying or not displaying the banner. It would be a board decision.
So really, it's, it's a case-by-case basis, based on what the policies are, how we want to reflect them, and the, I'm sorry, governments' policies are, and how we wish to reflect them back to the community?
I don't know if it's a policy, I think it would be a government viewpoint.
Viewpoint, okay, okay. I also sent out an article that, I believe it was in the New York Times, the current administration has just put forth a policy that, in this instance, the gay pride banners can be flown at any US embassy around the world. So, you know, they've made a decision as well. Yes, Justin, you had a comment?
Yeah, perhaps just another clarification or question with Jeff. So I reviewed those emails, and it sounds like the issue is whether or not we're establishing a public forum that would then be shrouded in First Amendment protections. So is, is there a benefit if we do this, to do it in two motions? The first being accepting the donation of the flag, so there's then clearly village property, and second, making the decision to display it. Maybe that's what you intended, but just wanted to ask you about that point. You're muted, Jeff.
I agree that we do not want, I mean, we should not have a policy that talks about what flags we will display from organizations. I, I think trustee Lickab is correct, that it would be a two-step motion. You'd be accepting the gift or rejecting the gift. If accepted, deciding whether or not to display the banner.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the gift.
I, I would be specific in the motion, don't you think, Jeff?
Sure, the gift of the LGBTQIA+ banner gifted to the village. Do I have a second?
Has someone gifted it to us already?
There, yes.
Okay, great, sorry, then I will, I will second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second?
Is there discussion?
Oh, there of course always is before we
Thank you.
Yes, Lily?
Thank you. Do we have a size? And that's, that's one question, as a second question. We have a description and a size?
The banner is, I think it's, Zach and I measured it, it was two feet by four feet, I believe. You know, and it sort of hangs, you can hang it down, you know.
The second question, will the acceptance of the gift and the decision to display be all in one motion?
No, we just clarified that.
But I mean, accepting a gift and then deciding to fly it as two separate motions, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So currently, there's, there's a simple motion, the first part, as Jeff said, it should be two parts. So the first part, the motion that was just made was simply to accept the gift of the, of this banner.
Okay.
Okay, any, any further discussion or comments from the board?
No. Dorothea has her hand up.
Oh, Dorothea, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm able to raise my hand, I did. Are we entertaining any discussion from the public?
Sure, are there questions, or?
Um, there was someone, put up something to me about a comment, and I'm trying to find it, because I'm not seeing it. So I'm trying to clarify that, just one second. Okay, the question from, that I do see, is this a discussion on policy, or this discussion on flying the LQ banner? I, I think it was kind of both.
We answered that, yeah, we already answered that. So we talked about policy, and then have made a specific motion to accept the banner. And then another motion will be made to fly the banner for the Pride, for Pride Month.
Okay.
I hope that's clarifying. I'm sorry, it's Dorothea?
That's all I have.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a sec, I have another question.
Sure, Lily, sure.
I'm so sorry. Now, during this discussion, are we speaking at this time of one specific banner? Or are we also discussing the other two letters that we received regarding, I'm trying to remember, one was police lives, and the other one was Irish heritage, letters that the trustees received requesting banners? Are we also discussing, is this a concept we're discussing, or we're only discussing one specific request?
Yeah, yes, Dan.
Yeah, so we've covered this several times. The motion has been to receive the LGBTQIA+ banner. That's the motion. If there are other motions you'd like to make after that, we can do that. But we're focused right now on the LGBTQIA+ banner that was gifted to us. Thank you.
Yes, Jeff?
I, I think that we ought to keep this on a case-by-case basis, very specific.
Right. Right, I, I, I agree with Jeff's comments.
I agree with Lily.
Okay, so this isn't a policy decision. This is a specific decision on this one banner.
Exactly.
Yes.
You are correct in that.
Lily, I'm very confused. You've now said this four times.
Listen, don't be so critical, Dan. I'm allowed to have questions. So please be respectful.
Okay, everybody, I'm taking, I'm not recognizing you, I'm not recognizing you. I'm taking this back.
She took a shot at me, I'd like to respond.
Okay.
Lily, there's nothing disrespectful about it. I am confused that you've asked the same question four times in a row, so.
Okay, she's, everybody is allowed to ask questions. Thank you, Dan, thank you, and thank you, Lily. Any other clarification needed from the board? We do have a motion before us. And, was there, there was a second? Roll call, please.
Great, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lickab?
Lickab, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. I'm gonna go back, because I did end up getting a couple comments. One I think is important. The first one is, I think all comments are from, that sounded wrong. Who, who donated the banner is one question that came out.
It was a resident from the town.
Okay, um, real quick, one of the comments is, I sent a message saying the village hall is not big enough for banners from all advocacy groups, and there's concern if we support one group, we need to support another group that might be in opposition of that group. And then, real quick, and this, I believe will be a Jeff question answered, does accepting or not accepting the gift to the village, open the village to litigation as to whether the gift is accepted or not from an individual, accepting a gift is subjective, deciding displays subjective. Will gifts be accepted from non-village residents? Do you get that? If you pop in the Q and A.
I wanted to try to answer that.
Sure.
We've already, that's really already been dealt with. We've, we're doing this on a specific case-by-case basis. And it's not establishing a policy, and therefore, it's, it's, I mean, you can never stop somebody from suing you, right? The only thing you do is set it up so you're not gonna lose. And that's what we're trying to do here. Trying to be very careful about not establishing a village, or a village policy on requests for placement of banners. We're, we're making this specifically a trustee action. Whether or not we have a banner by gift or purchase, and what we're gonna do with it once we have it.
And, and Jeff is speaking also in rendering his opinion, and also in conjunction with the opinion of NICOM.
I should, I should clarify that this, this is really coming from NICOM.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm, you know, I've looked at their stuff, and I've, I ran it by Wade Beltramo, one of their head counsel over there, and he says this is the way to do it. I have no reason to think that he's not correct. I think that was bad grammar, sorry.
And also, in fact, many other communities, you know, do hang banners, and they do, do this on a case-by-case basis.
So I'll make a motion to fly the Pride banner that was gifted to us and accepted for Pride Month, and fly it at village hall in a location to be determined by the mayor and Zach.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll, I'll second the motion, trustee Lickab, and also wanted to ask the question if we're going to specify a duration with the, the motion the trustee Keating made.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I guess I wasn't clear. I did say for, for Pride Month, so I would assume that's June 1 to 30, but I should be more specific about that.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, roll call, trustee Stetser?
I think Lily had her hand up for discussion.
I did.
I'm sorry.
Yep, Lily, I'm sorry, Lily, I missed your hand. Yep, Lily, I'm sorry, Lily, I missed your hand. I apologize, yes.
I did. And I wanted, I wanted to clarify something with Jeff because I have been struggling with this. That's one. And number two, I'm seeing chats pop up on my screen, people who, from the public who would like to participate in, in the meeting. And the clarification I'm asking Jeff is that, because I've really struggled with this, and that is the one of discretion. So if what you're saying is we're using discretion, our discretionary power to determine to fly a banner, a gifted banner, and that if we were to next meeting have in front of us an under request, and this is, this is where I'm struggling because we theoretically, we have the same type of request from two other individuals, very similar to the one that we were sent for the gay pride. It was an individual who sent a letter to the trustees and mayor making a request and we are, we are addressing that, that request. But it seems that we haven't addressed the other two requests as if they, we haven't discussed them. It's like they don't exist, but yet they're the same. And we're given under same circumstances as the, as the gay pride one. So I think if we're, we're going to be equitable, we need to discuss any request that is placed in front of us. And that is what I'm struggling about is that when we get another and it's not as, I don't know how to use the word popular, but it might have a different connotation. Is the what criteria do we use to be discretionary that wouldn't leave us open to litigation? And I appreciate what you're saying, that any action that any board takes is always subject to litigation. We've learned that the hard way. So that is my concern. That by making this gesture, that we would then be placed in a position of making these judgment calls, if you want to call them that, on other right to life in October, you know, any number that you can name that we would have to consider. And it's putting us in a position of making those judgment calls. And speaking personally, I don't know that I feel comfortable making judgment calls on people's special interests. No matter how I might espouse them myself, it's not the issue. As I'm representing our constituents in that regard, I need to be sensitive to that. So that is my concern, that we would be placing ourselves in the position of being, using discretionary power that then would be open to litigation. And I hope that other people who wish to speak in the audience will be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Lily. Yes, Dan.
So, yeah, we're using our discretion on a case by case basis. And again, if you, if you want to, after this specific issue, if you want to raise a motion to discuss the other two requests, go for it.
Yeah, I, I'd like to add, add something. Because there are so many other communities that, you know, do fly, like in this instance, I'm just going to use the gay pride flag because that's really what's before us right now, very specifically. And I've spoken with other, you know, people in other communities and they have not had litigation that has ever been successful. As far as I know, Jeff may want to speak to that. I certainly know Wade Beltramo could speak to that as well. But most importantly, I want to read just a couple of sentences from a proclamation that was issued by the prior board. It was issued in June 25 of last year. And it was signed by trustee Landfair, trustee Golusha, trustee Keating, trustee Stetser, and Mayor Corby at the time. Just a couple of sections. Pittsburgh Village is a diverse community that strives to be welcoming to all people. And Pittsburgh has a rich tradition of being a socially progressive place with a rich history of advocacy for social justice. For many years, the village of Pittsburgh has had a non-discrimination policy updated in 2013 and 2016. Village policy currently states, "Our village prohibits unlawful harassment of anyone for any reason, including but not limited to race, color, sex, age, disability, religion, citizenship, national origin, ancestry, military status, or veteran status, marital status, familial status, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, status of a victim of domestic violence, stalking or sex offenses, predisposing genetic characteristics, genetic information, and any other status protected by law." And I think that's an important statement that has been made on behalf of our village. I will just add one more thing. In Pittsburgh, we value our friends and neighbors for their character, regardless of their cultural background, regardless of who they love, and regardless of any disability they may live with. This has been a policy, a proclamation, I should say, a proclamation that has been signed. It has been in effect in some form since 2013. And I think what we're talking about here is not advocacy for a political organization in any way, shape or form. These are human beings who happen to be born with a certain type of orientation or a certain type of ethnicity or background. So I, I support flying this banner. I think it's important that what we proclaim and what we sign, we reflect back to our community. Any other comments, Jeff?
I don't know if trustee Landfair asked a question. I don't know if you wanted an answer from me. But I think that Dan is correct. We are indeed exercising, we, the board is indeed exercising discretion. And that's the whole point of how this is not subject to attack. Because the board is reflecting what it, the views that it feels is in the best interest of the village. So that, that's the whole point of this.
Okay.
So a couple of things, Lily, I reflected on what, what you said about, you know, your own education and I thought about that and that makes a lot of sense. And we do have three votes available to us. I know or abstain. So if, if a person is on this board and is not comfortable voting for something, then they don't have to, or they can abstain. So just wanted to remind us that that is an option.
Correct. That's correct. Thank you.
Yes, Lily, yes.
And also that when we have questions or need a clarification, that we are permitted to ask those questions until we feel comfortable with the responses. I, I like to remind the board that we also deliberate quite extensively when we are making these decisions, even though that it's a popular thought and it makes everyone feel good. I'm not denying that. I'm not, obviously, I've signed two or three proclamations since I've held this seat and they've all been in support. And of course I am, that's not, that's not the question and that's not the issue. It isn't a question of what I support or do not support. It is a question of my concern for the the village going forward and the chance of litigation. I like to have that question answered very clearly so I understand what the ramifications might be for any decisions that I make on behalf of the people of the village. So I would like to be clear that I'm not speaking against anything or flying the banner because it's a gay pride banner. And it seems to be inferred that that is what I'm talking about. And of course it is not. I am talking about discretion and whether we can be challenged for using discretion. That was the question.
And thank you for that. And I think it is important that we talk about that. And I think Jeff addressed that by speaking with the top attorney for Nikon. And he shared that information. I don't know, Jeff, is there anything else you'd like to add? I mean, are there any major court cases or litigation regarding this specifically that, you know, Wade made you aware of?
No, I mean, this, this is a culmination of this started last year with a question about banners. And I really just wanted to confirm with him that I understood Nikon's position clearly. And he confirmed that I did. And that's the basis. Now, trustee, trustee Stetser has her hand up.
Yes, Renee, thank you.
First of all, thank you, Lily, for your thoughts. I like deliberation is extremely important when we're making these decisions. So I appreciate, appreciate the thoughtfulness. I just wanted to add that last year, the village and town flew the pride banner at at the library during the, during Pride Month. So this isn't unheard of. I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
Thank you, Renee. Yes, Justin.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone as well. And Lily, thank you very much for your, your concerns that you've raised. And I think that, you know, in talking about these, these issues, it goes beyond values. We're talking about constitutional law related to the First Amendment. And it's part of our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're all clear on those issues, that we don't get sued. And I also appreciate Mr. Turner's diligence and following up with Nikon to obtain those recommendations. So I, I agree with Mayor Plummer in mentioning the, the prior resolution of the board. I think that's very relevant here and in making this particular decision. I think that other issues that are relevant here also are that this is a matter of deeply held personal identity. And, and that's a distinguishing factor of this decision to, to fly the flag. And it relates to a marginalized group. And I think that those considerations can be considered along with the, the resolution that was previously passed by the board to support this. So as long as it's on strong legal footing, which it does appear to be, to allow us to exercise discretion in the future, I also support this, this resolution.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Yes. Any other comments from the board? Oh, yes, Dorothea.
There is several chat comments and I'm not sure if we want to go over those after you finish the vote or before or you have any preference, some. Yeah, just looking for direction from the board.
Any thoughts from the board on that?
I would think we'd want to see them before, or we can look through them ourselves, but I think we'd want to hear them before we vote.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And Lily, yes, your hand.
Yes, I do. I would like to respectfully point out that if we were in public forum in a public setting and residents had come to the meeting and had their hand up and would like to speak, we would certainly, I would think, hear them because this is an agenda item and they are speaking to the agenda item. So I, I'm struggling to understand why we would close ourselves off to hearing from the public during a discussion on something that we're deliberating upon. I mean, that's why we're here, is it not, as justices?
I don't think anybody's talking about closing ourselves off at all. I think Dorothea was just bringing this back to the board.
Then I, I would like to hear what the public has to say.
You know, yeah, I'm all for that, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, Renee, did you have any thoughts? Anybody else? Okay, yeah.
Want to hear, hear from.
If you can read some of the comments or.
Correct, I can read, read some of the comments.
Some might be duplicates, but at least to.
Correct, I'm going to try to do my best and I am going to disclose, I'm not going to read a comment that I feel is, you know, I'm not here to argue with people or to say things that are not respectful. So I am not doing that. Please don't ask me to be your person to relay an unrespectful message. I'm not going to do that. That is my choice.
Comment on the agenda item before the board. Thank you.
So it looks like Marty has a question. So it's entirely subjective. Will gifts be accepted from non-village residents for the purpose of displaying on Village Hall?
Maybe, depends.
Okay, the next question. See, sometimes this doesn't give me the name of who put in the comment.
We should have the name, the name and the address of the person for the record.
Yeah, see, some of these don't have.
Mentioned in the beginning of the meeting.
Correct. And I'm, so, so if you have a comment and I don't read it, please raise your hand. That's the only way I can make sure I get to you. I'm not trying to skip anybody. So right now, people, I cannot see who suggested this. Marty, again, looks, no one is discriminating against the current flag request. Mayor Plummer has inserted, here we go, inserted her opinion from a quest for facts on the matter. Decision will open the door to all flags and banners.
Again, I believe that that is an incorrect assumption based on the information from our attorney and the Nikon attorney.
There's a Sue. Her question is, but it's not about this banner. It's about all other banners and flags the other citizens may want to hang.
Again.
Yeah, Dan.
Yeah, just again, it's our discretion.
Correct. Marty, again, is the donor of the flag a village resident? Can you get an answer?
I, I've seen those chats. I don't know if the donor wants to be public. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I can ask that person and if they say yes, I have no problem being public, then I'll publicize it. But if they don't, then I will respect their anonymity. So I don't know the answer to that.
Do we have other people commenting and so the same people are going over again? That would be helpful, I think, to.
Yep, we have game. It seems that trust, if a trustee were required to have a, to champion the proposal of a banner, it would provide a natural filter. I do not expect that any trustees would advocate for some of the suggestions other than putting forward like banners for KKK. Lily, you would be welcome to propose flying a pro-life flag if you feel strongly about it and bring it to a vote. Emily counted it. Didn't you use, didn't you use all your discretion when discussing improving the Monroe County, Monroe Gulf open banners earlier in this meeting? Not sure why these are different.
Well, I, I, yeah, Jeff's, Jeff probably has something to say, but I mean, that, that is just for a specific event coming into our community. There's no, I mean, Jeff, maybe you want to speak a little bit more to that.
The trustees did not exercise their discretion. It's a, it's a building inspector function.
It's a code.
Okay, and then I have a hand up to speak and this would be Robert Corby. I'm going to allow him to talk now. Mr. Corby, you're ready to speak.
I had to unmute myself. Thank you. I appreciate the thorough discussion you're having on this issue. I've asked who the donor is and I asked that because I know of other municipalities where the donor wasn't disclosed. And then they found out later that there was either a political or some awkward situation with the donor. So I think as a policy, I think it's in terms of transparency to protect everybody and to protect the actual mission of the statement that the board is trying to make with whatever decision you come to, you should disclose publicly the donor of the flag. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Thank you. Dorothea, any other? Oh, yes, Steve, Jeff.
I, I would point out that, that trustee Keating's motion was to display a village-owned flag at this point. And it's not, so the donor's identity may not be really all that important for this piece.
Thank, thank you. Dorothea, you're muted.
Okay, Ms. Carabares, you are unmuted. You can speak.
She's still muted.
I've.
I'm seeing the mute.
I know, I've sent her a thing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. This is Margaret Carabares. I live at 81 South Main Street. I'm the one who questioned, why would the board accept a banner that it did not intend to fly? Doesn't the acceptance imply endorsement of displaying it? Just a question, a policy question. Thank you.
No, as discussed earlier, we're doing those as two separate things.
That's why there's two separate motions. Thanks for the question. Yes, Dorothea.
I think I have them all. I think.
Okay. Yes, Steve.
I'm just curious, as we kind of, somebody brought up the golf tournament, would this also, or should this also have a temporary sign permit or banner permit? Even though it is municipal? Jeff, that, that would be a question for you, Jeff.
No, this is not, this is not like a temporary banner for a business. It's going to be opened. It's also not a special banner advertising an event. This is a village banner, just like we own the American flag and the decision made, been made to fly it. I, I think it's the same deal.
Okay, I just, I want to make sure for consistency, that's all.
Or, or for example, if we were to. Or for example, if we were to fly like the Arbor Day banner or something like that, is would that be the same kind of thing, Jeff?
I would think so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Justin.
Yeah, I just wanted to to mention on that topic that our code in 168-4 says that as long as it's in discharge of a government function, we're exempt from the assigned code.
Thanks for that. Okay, we have a motion before us.
Okay, we have a motion from Dan, a second by trustee Light Gibb. So I'll call roll call trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Trustee Light Gibb.
Like I buy.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Mayor Plummer.
All right.
Motion passes.
Okay.
There are still comments coming in. Are we do? Do you want me to go ahead and read the ones I do have a name associated? They don't, I can't read it. Emily says, okay, thanks for the clarification. So if there was an event associated with pride flags, such as a gay pride parade, this would be a code discussion?
Well, I'm sorry, somebody was texting me.
I can read it again.
I didn't hear what the question was. I apologize.
Okay, okay, thanks for that. This is Emily. Um, her question is, okay, thanks for that clarification. So if there was an event associated with pride flags, such as gay pride parade, then this would be a code discussion?
Yes.
Jeff answered, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and Marty with the last question, how is the discrimination made for how long a banner will be displayed?
Discretion.
Or discretion. Beat me, Dan.
Okay, I believe I am all caught up.
Okay, thanks so much. Thanks, everybody. And thanks also, you know, it's an important topic and it affects a lot of people in our community and beyond. So I'm glad we we really had an opportunity to talk through this. Thanks to everybody. Okay, so the next item up, the LGBTQ proclamation.
Up, I'm sorry, you, if we do the vote, we did the vote. I'm lost, never mind. Sorry, continue. Ignore the quirk.
Hey. Dorothy, do you want me to share my screen with this proclamation?
Sure, because I don't have it.
Okay, okay, sure. Here is the proclamation. You should be seeing it. Everybody seeing that?
Oh, yeah, I can see it.
I'm going to make it a little bigger. Does that help? Oh, too much. Everybody good?
That's that's good. Thank you.
Okay, I'll read it. Do you want me to read it into the record? Short.
Sure, yes, please.
Village proclamation for Pride Month. And and this is a draft. It was circulated to the trustees on Friday. I did get feedback from trustee Stetzer. Thank you very much for that, Renee, and some edits that were very helpful. Also got some input from some of the office staff. Marina gave some input, which was terrific and improved it. Village proclamation for Pride Month, June 1, 2021. I don't know if we need to put today's date or June 21st. To the people who live in, work in and visit Pittsburgh Village, June is Pride Month and Pittsburgh Village continues to strive to be welcoming to and supportive of the LGBTQIA+ community. Pittsburgh Village sees you and supports you. LGBTQIA+, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex and asexual. Pride Month commemorates the events of June 1969 centered around the Stonewall Inn. The month serves to remind us all that work has been done and needs to be done to achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for those who identify as LGBTQIA+. We choose to fly the pride flag for the month of June to show that support, to say to all of our stakeholders that Pittsburgh Village is a welcome place for the, that should be welcoming, sorry, there's a typo there. Place for the LGBTQIA+ community and its allies. The pride banner is particularly moving because its multitude of colors and symbols have clear meaning. We urge you to do the research yourself to learn of the specific meanings included in the banner. Happy Pride Month to all. And then it includes our names. Do you want me to leave this up here? Do you want me to stop sharing?
Well, I think you've read it. So, you know, thank you. And it might be easier just to see people, you know, on the screen. Thank you.
I can paste the cop contents into chat as well if you'll.
Okay, thank you. Are there any any comments from the board? I think it's clear and it says it, you know?
It's too long, based in, it won't allow me.
Oh, it is, okay. We could.
So I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as written.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the vote.
Do.
Trustee Stetzer.
The public?
Oops, I'm sorry.
Do we want to open it up to the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Were there were there questions coming in? I'm sorry. I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything from Dorothea. I apologize.
I'm sorry, I just their chat just hit. Their Annalee says, thank you, this will mean much to so many.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, oh, okay. Thank you, Dan, thanks for catching that. So please call the vote.
Okay, trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Trustee Light Gibb.
Like I buy.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
And thanks, thanks, Dan, for doing the work on this and also for Renee for your edits. Thank you.
Marina. Mine were grammatical.
It all counts.
Which isn't a word.
Thanks, everybody. That's great. Okay, next up. Jeff, by the way, did you have anything further on your report?
I do not.
Okay.
I was about ready to raise my hand and see if you wanted me to stick around for the rest of this.
No, I think we're good. And thank you so much for your your input tonight.
Everybody have a great night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, um, next up, parking for people who work in the village. I don't know if Susan Loda is in attendance. The her spectrum went out, I guess, at one end of the village, her cable was out and all of that in her computer. So she may not be.
She's not in the chat.
Oh, okay, so it's probably still down. I can just give you a little background. She contacted me and actually a couple other people who are business owners and also people who work in the village. And I've also spoken with Mikey, who handles our traffic ticketing about this. And I just wanted to bring this back for discussion to the board. You know, people come in to work in the village. They may have like an eight hour shift. It's four hour parking. They have to leave where they're working to go maybe move their car or they get ticketed. And the thought was, is there maybe a system that we could come up with? Take a look at something where, I don't know, you purchase a sticker for maybe, you know, four times a year, maybe it's a three month sticker. And maybe we designate sort of different areas of our village where the sticker sticker parking can be allowed. I don't know. I'm just throwing this out to the village because it's really been a concern from people who work in the village about just sort of moving their cars around and all of that. I nothing more than just bringing this up for thought and discussion and how do we support our businesses and the people that work in them? Yes, Lily.
Having been there, done that. It was suggested at one point when we had discussed this previously that the new rec center has quite a large parking lot and that it would be available perhaps by talking to the town and maybe by permit or because I can suggest that a sticker would be an opportunity for a lot of people who work in the village to park all day long or all evening long, depending on what their shift was. So that might be an opportunity. I know we had discussed having using Village Hall to certain cars who might apply. People might apply to say, I'd like to use it from two to five or whatever they indicate as long as it didn't interfere with our meetings once we're back to meeting in at the hall again. But that's another opportunity. I think that, as I recall, from the corner of Lincoln on, is there is no limit. It's not a two hour limit. Previously, the two hour limit was placed because at the request of the merchants because we were getting a lot of all day parking and that impeded their turnover for their businesses. And so they might be approached again and say, would you like to have that extended to three hours perhaps? To allow people to, you know, if you had a, I don't know, they wouldn't have to move their cars maybe just once instead of twice. The other thing is the empty parking lot in the center of the village behind the former blades. That land, that property owner might be open to receiving some stipend for using his parking lot. I understand that he'd want some kind of money for that because you do have insurance and plowing in the winter. So, you know, that's an opportunity, though, for him to have that expense covered. So there are opportunities, I think, if they are examined a little bit.
Now, really good points. Thank you. Thanks for all of that. That's great. Any other, any other thoughts from people or? Yes, Renee.
What's the harm? It seems like the simplest thing would be to have some some sort of sticker they could put on their car. And many of the businesses already have parking designated somewhere for their employees. So they they are, they aren't using that timed parking, so it wouldn't apply to them. But just a sticker that you register every year or something. I mean, we'd have to think this through, but, you know, why wouldn't you want like Lily, if she was, if you were parked on Main Street back when you used to be at SJS, I would hate for you to have to come out and move your car. It seems seems a little ridiculous. So I don't know, it seems like a sticker, like some sort of registration thing that would, then the parking monitor would be able to to see that that that's an employee and not not somebody else and not give them a ticket. I don't know. Steve can probably has a better idea of how this would work or what would work.
May I ask Renee for clarification?
Yeah.
When you're talking about the sticker, would that then allow the person to to park somewhere where there's a two hour restriction all day without?
Yeah, basically would would just exempt them from that. But not all, but not all businesses would, I mean, it wouldn't apply to to all businesses because some businesses have designated parking already, but.
Yeah, I don't know. I think we'd have to find out how many we would be talking about because theoretically you could use up all the parking on Main Street.
It's true.
You know, just on a couple and they and sort of creating a problem for, you know, the Mexican restaurant, for instance, and a couple of others who count on that turnover. So I know it on side streets, on all of our side streets, typically that's where we would park, you know, like up on Lincoln or, you know, because there's no, there's no limit.
But maybe those areas could be designated that way rather, you know, if you have a sticker, it's only allowed in on certain portions of streets perhaps or another designated areas. Yes, Steve.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that we don't do it on Main Street just because of the the turnover, you know, the shops that are there, things like that. You're gonna, you're gonna hurt the people that you were trying to support. I would, I would say we could issue a permit to say what I was thinking, what Lily suggested at the parking lot of Blades, contact the owner there, see what it would take. And then somehow share if we had to do administrative work to issue permits. And it would be a simple paper permit they could put on their their dash. But there would be an administrative cost to us.
Right.
A little bit. And then the rest would go to the parking lot owner for the use of his space. So I like that idea because that parking lot is is empty. It's a, it's a blight right now, kind of. So I mean, that that parking lot probably can hold 15 cars or maybe even a few more there. So if if a deal could be worked out with that space, I think that would be a great opportunity.
Well, what we could do then, maybe Steve, you and I can, you know, kind of put our heads together based on all this information we're getting and maybe talk to that owner, maybe look at some of the other options. Lily, I like your ideas too, of, you know, those other lots that maybe aren't fully used. That's another great idea too, you know? So maybe the combination of the sticker and then an area where the sticker is valid. And if they're, they have a sticker on Main Street, they'll still be ticketed.
I was going to say, it sounds like the sticker idea is not going to not going to work because.
Not the sticker, but the permit or whatever.
Yeah, the permit. Mike, I'd like to retract my suggestion because it sounds like based on all these other factors, we're only talking about small segments of in our main roads and where where customers would like to park. So I was thinking more big picture. So I would like to retract my suggestion about a permit. I think that's going to complicate things and take parking parking away.
And and again, it's 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 specifically for people who work in the village, in our village businesses. It's specifically geared to that. That was the the concept that was brought forth forward to me and, you know, why I'm bringing it up for discussion here tonight. So in terms of an action item moving forward. Steve, do you and I want to maybe just explore this a little bit more, take some of these ideas and maybe just, you know, come back, you know, next meeting or so and just, you know, push forward on this? I mean, do we all agree we should maybe look further into this and come back, you know, come back to the board with some ideas? Yep, I'm getting nods. Okay, yes, and I see Dorothea's hands up.
You have some comments on this topic.
Okay, great.
Okay, Robert indicates that you would use up most important parking for customers. Okay, Emily and Gabe, seems like it would be most friendly to businesses to not have employees taking up all the prime parking on Main Street. Would be nice if the rec center had designated employee parking for businesses.
Great, thank you. All good comments. Thank you. Yeah, Steve.
As I said, I think we need to sit down and brainstorm because I I can think of a few other locations in the village where these businesses or churches might be willing to donate or or, you know, give up a couple of set spots for people that work in the village and and work out some sort of a deal. So I think it's something we could should sit back and discuss and and then come back with some options.
Okay, great, thanks. Yep, Dorothea.
I have a request to speak from Maura Sykes. I apologize if I said the name wrong.
And is this is this specific to parking in the village?
This popped up just now, so I.
Okay.
I'm going to guess it is.
Oh, wait, what is this said? From Laura Sykes, that was a mistake.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. So, um, okay, so we're going to move, Steve and I'll move forward with this. We'll get some of these brainstorms and ideas put together and hopefully come back to the board with some some more thoughts on this. Thanks, everybody. All right, moving along. The Black Oak Tree that is at 38 Fountain Avenue, that's the part of Fountain Avenue that's down towards south. That that's been an ongoing issue of mitigation. And I know Zach, Zach has really been involved on this, in this. Zach, would you like to just speak to that a little bit and sort of what our next steps probably could be?
Yeah, so last couple of years, the the tree is massive and it has massive limbs on it. And they stretch far out, not so much straight up. And as these branches are stretching far out, they're starting to go over roads or houses. Couple of years ago, we had a large, I'm sorry, a year ago, we had a large limb that came down. And it was so massive, it took down power lines and snapped a utility pole. Then maybe a month or two later, another mass of them came down, just missing the house that it is sitting in front of. I've had an arborist come out, take a look at it. He posed a mitigation plan rather than cutting the tree down. Now, this does not take all liability and does not make the tree completely safe. It just to mitigate any kind of risk that could be there. The tree is approximately 150 years old and it's hard to determine how far the rot goes through the tree. So that's one method of trying to preserve the tree.
Could I chime in just a little bit on that, Zach? Um, because I, you know, I was fortunate to uh, be able to have, do that site visit with you and the arborist and um. It really is a beautiful tree and uh, the other possibility is that it may be edging towards the end of its lifespan. Um, so really what we, we need to discuss is, as Zach was starting to say, um, there's decay faults running through the tree. Um, so that's why we're losing branches and windstorms. Am I correct, Zach, in terms of how he was describing that?
Yes.
Yeah, and so to give you an idea, one branch um, can weigh like, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred pounds.
Oh, god, thousand.
Or a thousand, yeah, but the really long ones, absolutely. Yeah, probably half the time. I mean, they're, they're just massive. Um, so the liability and the risk potentially is, is pretty significant. Um, even with mitigation, um, trying to save the tree, cut it back, prune it back, um, thinning where they can. Um, doesn't completely eliminate that risk of another branch falling off perhaps. So. That's why we're, we really want to talk through this. We love this tree. Everybody loves this tree. Um, so do we do the mitigation and pay roughly, what was it, two, two thousand? Do you have any?
The mitigation was uh, yeah, roughly two thousand dollars. And that's, oh, one other thing that he did recommend, which, which could be a possibility is cabling some of the uh.
Right.
Up to the trunk of the tree, which that um, is not included in the mitigation.
Well, yeah, right. So it's two thousand dollars without the cabling. There'd be an additional cost with the cabling. Um, to remove the tree uh, was, I, I believe it was another fifteen hundred or. I can't even remember what he said, but he would not do it. He, we had to go to a different vendor. Am I correct?
Yes, I, if, if the tree was going to be removed, I would hire um, off of the county contract bid, which the pricing is already determined and that's about three thousand dollars.
Uh, say that again, please, the number again?
Three thousand dollars.
Thousand, okay.
County contract price.
Okay. So roughly twenty five hundred maybe with cabling, another five hundred would remove the tree. You know, this is, this is the issue really before us. It's our, the safety, public safety and also a tree. Yes, Justin?
Yeah, I, I just had a question. Uh, do I recall correctly that there were residents in the vicinity who has safety concerns about the, the tree? And a follow up to that, are there concerns mitigated if we did the, um, you know, the, the cabling or the. Um, if we took the recommendation of the arborist to shore things up temporarily?
Uh, I, I've been trying to reach out to the homeowner, um, and I was on my third phone number and. Haven't heard back. Um, the last phone number, the voicemail was full. So I think what I'm gonna do is literally just go leave a note. You know, because it's important that we do speak with this homeowner because they're kind of in the direct path. You know, on, for part of this tree. Yeah, really good point.
Um, Maria's here. Maria's here.
Oh, wonderful. I didn't know she was here.
Yes, she's here.
Oh, even better.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be great to hear from her.
Yes, can we, Marie, yes.
Hi.
Hi, gets done, she's ready to go.
Okay, Maria.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, how are you?
I'm doing great. I am so appreciative that the board is talking about the issue of the tree. Alisa, I have been receiving calls from the village, but uh, just got one in my cellphone and uh. I finally removed my, don't have a landline anymore, so it's my cellphone. So I, I think I, I got your call, but I, I, uh, anyway.
Okay, you're here, great.
So uh, uh, yes, I am very concerned. Uh, this, uh, the, in the past year, two branches fell. The good thing is that those two branches were, nobody was under the branch. And I don't know if, if you hear this, when it starts cracking, if someone can run fast enough to move away from it. Uh, I, the, my concern is that. The branch that failed last year. Uh, was supposed to be a healthy branch. Yeah, uh, from all the branches, because I pay attention to the tree all day, you know, all the time. I look at it because it's, it's beautiful, but it's also a concern. The branch opposite to the branch that fell was the one that was, I was concerned of. Because there is a, uh, there is kind of a little tree growing from one of the cracks that uh, are, are attached to the. To the, to the main trunk. So that shows that there's something going on with that branch. Based on the conversations that I've had, people that know about trees. So, yes, I love the trunk. Every time I try to trim it once, uh, just some dead branches. And I paid some money to do that, but I'm probably, uh, Zach, I, I, that, now that you talk uh, about the tree. The person said the tree's on its way out. And uh. And I just think for how painful it is to let it go. You know, uh, how much are we going to risk that someone is going to get hurt? Because we just want, we don't want to let that tree go. You know, we let go people, parents, you know, family members that age and we say goodbye and we bury them. And I think we just need to start thinking about uh, start to let the tree go because uh, I don't want to see anybody hurt. And believe me, I love the tree. It just makes my house look better.
I agree with that, Maria.
Thank you. Yeah, thank, thanks for that. Yes, Lily.
Okay, uh, it would be probably helpful to do some findings of fact. And to verify the age of the tree and how, what is the usual lifespan of that species of tree. And to lay out um, all of the um, things that Maria has. I wanted also to clarify, Zach, uh, how much of that tree, because it has grown so large, um, is actually on village property? Is the enti- is it in its entirety or just a portion?
Um, well, it is listed in our tree inventory, so I would say the entire tree is the. Um, how much crosses the line, it's, it's tough to tell right now.
Okay, so one option we might consider, uh, this will leave a very big hole, is for us to see. The very largest tree that we can possibly afford to put in its place. I will say anecdotally that um, a neighbor who's. Long since deceased, who was almost a hundred years old when she passed and lived on Bouton Avenue all of her life. Uh, there was another tree similar to that at Jackson and Bouton as well. And she als- always referred to them as the victory trees that were planted uh, after World War One. And so they certainly do have a significant uh, history in our village and as Maria pointed out, is a well-loved tree. And just like with any well-loved uh, living things, we sometimes have to say goodbye to them. And so perhaps we could have a little memorial or ceremony uh, prior to taking, taking the tree. And perhaps adults, there might be woodworkers who would be interested in taking the tree and making um, some. Bowls or whatever, cutting boards or something that we could all walk away with the um, a memento from that favorite tree. So, but uh, to say, to, to back up our decision, I think we should have all of those facts that Zach relayed out and Maria have laid out and. So that everyone understands.
Lily, just, just to answer your question, I'm looking at the GIS map right now.
Thanks.
The property line splits the tree pretty much right in half.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought, okay.
Yeah, tree, trees don't know property boundaries. They just.
No, they just grow and so.
They just grow. Yeah, no, it's a great tree and, you know, I was just thinking about, um, you know, when we lost the beech tree. You know, and now they've just planted like the clone from the tree and, you know, there was a bit of a ceremony and all of that. So I, I think that's. It's, it's a really nice idea if, if we do have to say goodbye, you know? Yep, other, other comments from people? Yeah. Um, oh yes, Justin?
Sure, no, I, I appreciate the, uh, the community input um, from residents and, and from Zach as well and, and it sounds like the. Um, the issue of public safety is, is really uh, uh, important here and, and um, it seems like it might be time to say goodbye to the tree. Um, considering some kind of a replacement that's, that's in healthier shape.
Yeah, and I think we can also, you know, reach out to our community for additional ideas, you know, I mean, I love what you said, Lily, and you know, really. It, it's a moment for our village. I mean, the tree's been here longer than all of us. So. Yes, Dorothea.
Couple of quick chat comments. Thank you, Lily. The idea of a ceremony is important. That's from Maria. Um, Emily and Gabe said ornaments for candlelight night.
Oh. That's a good one.
Lily, are there any more of those uh, victory trees left or have they all been um, cut down? Do you know?
I, I know the one on the corner, Jackson inbound went about ten years ago. Um, and that was significant. It really does make a huge difference to how community, how it feels. So that's why I'm hoping the largest tree we can possibly afford. So we're not talking about a little. I call them developer trees, they're just little.
Little ceiling.
Something, a good size specimen would be wonderful because then we don't have to wait so long.
I would love to find out more information about the, the, the story about the victory trees. I mean, I think that's.
Her name was Mildred Senns, uh, and she, her family worked in the brick. Yards that was down on Shane's Alley, back when there was a brick. And uh, so I think, and she had a lot of stories, but uh, that was one that I always remembered, the planting of those trees as victory trees.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe historic Pittsburgh could help us out or Audrey, you know.
Yeah, Audrey would probably.
Yeah, that'd be kind of great, really, to get that, get that story put together, you know?
Yes, I, I see a book. Cap Bowman Smith should come and do us a book.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. That would be great. Yeah. Dorothy, any other? Yeah.
Yes, uh, Ken Dryman says perhaps David Jewitt could make a piece for the village.
All kinds of options, absolutely.
Yeah, I also love, um, you know, that copper uh, beech tree. The wood was repurposed for the bar at the manor brewery. So I wonder if the businesses could use some of it too, which was really interesting.
There's a lot of tree. We could probably spread it throughout the village in a lot of different ways. You know, I think they're all good ideas, absolutely. Okay, so um. What the action item, I guess, going forward then really is, um, you know, Lily said, you know, let's find out more about the tree and the lifespan and the age of all, and all that. Um, do we, do we want to do some more work on this? Do we feel that we are ready to? Say goodbye? Where are we with this? Anybody? Steve?
Hey Zach, is, is any, that's a black oak, right?
Uh, yes, well, it's either a red or a black, not sure.
I thought he said it was a black oak, but.
Yeah, I've heard other people call it a red.
Oh, okay.
Right, just, it's an oak. Is, is there, is there any of it that's viable? I mean, a, a bunch of it or no?
Uh, I'm sure there are pieces. It's hard to tell until you start cutting a tree up. Um. It's possible. I'm sure there's, there's a lot of good lumber, a lot of good.
I'm just curious, have we investigated anybody with like a portable mill or anything like that that might be willing to help out? In, in exchange for the wood, if there's enough of it decent for any board length?
Um, it's possible. I remember when the copper beech came down, there was a line of people that were trying to get their hands on the wood that came off that tree. Um, and I'm sure we can have the same type of situation here. I don't know if it's something that we want to look into trying to. Get money out of.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying let them cut it to take it, so you're not paying as much to ha- if it. If it's found that the tree has to be removed, we don't have to spend a ton of money that somebody might be willing to come in, especially. The price of lumber right now is insane, absolutely insane.
Um, I'm sure there are companies that we can find that will be willing to do that as long as the community would be all right with that. Company taking the wood from that tree.
Well, but maybe we could still make a deal where we do get some, some of this returned back to our village for some of these ideas that we've been discussing. It's a big, it's a big tree. Yes, Dorothea?
Um, Mr. Reynolds is requesting to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Reynolds, you're cleared to speak.
He's, he's still muted, I think. I'm seeing the mic.
Mike, you're muted. Nobody can hear you.
Oh, there, there, it's, okay.
Jan Reynolds.
Oh, Jan, hi.
Church Street. My concern is it's a huge tree. Uh, taking down a huge tree, almost anything could happen. So my question has to do with liability. I mean, there will be a cost to us if something doesn't work right when we remove this tree. I know it's very expensive to remove a tree. It sounds like this tree is at least half on village property. But we're gonna take all the risk. So that's, that's my question.
Thank, thank you. Oh, well, Zach, we were talking, you were talking about the county. Um. Working with the county to, yeah, if you could just speak a little bit more to that, you know?
The county puts out a uh. Submittals for, for bids um, every so often and the current contract holder for that is Terry Tree Service will come through. Um, they have to submit pricing, um, and that's how they're awarded the contract. And so that the pricing is, is considered um, firm. So we, we already know that what it would cost to take a tree down and that's three thousand dollars. Um. I, I don't know anything above that.
Right, but also, you know, um, these, these are sort of the heavy hitter contractors that do this kind of work. Am I correct with really large trees? They have the equipment, they're insured, they're, you know, certified.
They have to be fully uh, insured and.
Okay.
Have all the equipment necessary to take down large trees like this. They took down a ninety foot ash tree for us not too long ago. They have uh, bucket trucks that come in and they are able to navigate the bucket up to the top of these trees. That's how big the trucks are.
Okay.
Not, I'm pretty sure they do have a crane if need be to uh, to assist with the bucket trucks.
Okay.
So they are set up for taking trees of this site, this site down.
Okay, thank you. That, that's really helpful information. Yeah, Dorothea, did you have your hand up again? Was there, we're good? Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments from the board? So. The action items, I guess, then really are to um, explore fully the options for what it would mean to remove the tree. Um. And Zach, we probably should look in if we are gonna even look, look at mitigation. I mean, I think just to cover all of our bases, um, because this is a big deal. Um, what it would be to even cable it, you know, in addition if we were gonna do mitigation. But I think at this point. We need to come back now, um, with everything really rounded out and maybe um, put together some of the ideas, maybe look into. Uh, what Steve suggested, you know, with uh, maybe somehow cutting a deal where people get lumber. You know, um. Something, yeah. So.
Well, get, I'm sorry, given that uh, Val and Sherman are right there. That know Pittsburgh lumber.
Yeah.
Uh, they might have uh, a, a real interest. I know when the branch came down and I inquired about the branch because I knew woodworkers. Uh, who were interested in making bowls and so forth. Uh, I did discover that there was um, another woodworker that's on South. And he asked for and received that branch that, that fell down. So he, uh, I think he cut some up into firewood and was going to, I asked if he ever made anything, if I could have a, a chance to buy it, but. I think he mostly cut, cut it up. He lives on South. So I think that there are, even villagers would be very interested.
Yeah, okay. Well, we certainly can, you know, put the word out on that as well. Um.
So if, if we bring in a company that is willing to take the tree down for. Whatever they can salvage that is good, that could be good lumber off the tree, they're gonna be less likely to hand it out to the public because then that eats into any profit. They can make of that, cutting the tree down for. So I think we have to determine whether it's something that we want to make available to the public, to the community. Or if we want to take the tree down at minimal cost.
Um, I think, I don't think one excludes the other. I think sometimes when you cut a deal, they may not get the whole tree, but they may get enough to make it worth their while. And some still, still may be able to come back to the community. I mean, I think that's why we need to maybe, let's look at all the facets of this.
What I'll do, I'll, I'll reach out to um, the town and find out who they used to cut down the copper beech tree and see if that is something that we could.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, um, update on village hall maintain, maintenance?
Uh, Alisa.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
I, I really don't feel well, so I'm going to go, it, it, it looks like there's, it's procedural stuff from here.
I, I really don't feel well, so I'm going to go, it, it, it looks like there's, it's procedural stuff from here.
Okay.
Nothing too controversial. If, if you need, if anybody needs me to. If there's a deadlock on a vote, give me a call and I'll come back.
Okay, understood. Gee, I hope you feel better.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Okay, all right, um, update on village hall maintenance, um. Dorothea, do you have the list?
I provided the list to all the trustees.
We have the, okay, everybody got the list of, you know.
It's pretty extensive. We have it written, broken down into three sub-care categories. Village Hall Maintenance, Village Hall Building Repairs, Village Hall Wish List. Yes, we have wishes. It's like Christmas, we bundle them up and ask for them with a bow. So I guess just wanted to share this and go over the overall list of concerns we have right now with the building. And with some things that need to be repaired currently, just. As we go through, I'm, we made a decision, we had an emergency situation with lighting in the village hall. We discovered we're. Burning out our lights and we're going to have to replace the insides of them. I think Steve could speak to that better than I can. So we had to hire an electrician to come in to do that and we're waiting on those repairs currently. And as I speak, the village hall is getting dimmer and dimmer. So that is a necessity, it's an emergency. It was not a planned repair. We do have an older building, so we always have to be prepared for these type of emergencies to arise.
Yeah, there was a, a, almost like a sort of, um, electrical scorching on the housing. Of a number of lights, so. That had to be addressed, obviously, yeah. So, uh, yeah, Zach, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add to that. Pretty much. Nope, okay. Okay, um, and then also you saw there was an estimate for, um, restoring the finish on the doors. Did everybody see that? And that's the same company that did the repair work this past year on the door. And, um, what we found, when it was sanded, is that the, there was some type of a finish on the door that was opaque. And now it has revealed, um, I think it's mahogany underneath, I think that's what they said. So. Um, I think this is an opportunity to really kind of get these doors spruced up, uh, for the next hundred years. So I'd like the board to consider, um. Approving this. Yes, Lily.
Um, do we have, um, any money in the budget for, I know we have for village hall repairs and so forth. Um, and I know you had on your priority list, uh, Dorothea, when we were talking about the budget. The, the, um, heating system. Um, so where do we stand? So I guess this is a question for Mary and for Dorothea as far as the budget and what monies might be available and. Would we be taking from another? Priority in order to address the door? That's my question.
I would comment that I believe we still have funding left in this current year's budget. And if we're going to use it, we need to use it now to get this authorized. Um, Mary, is that correct that I still have, that the village still has some money in the village hall maintenance?
Uh, we do. How much is this bill?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred for, for everything.
Uh, I have. Under that I can spare for that, but it would have to be. Ordered in the next couple of days to have it done. And then it'd be considered an accounts payable for this year. And we're in good enough shape where we could do that. Who's this quote coming from again?
It's John Bailey.
John Bailey, it's the same, same company that, that did the repairs to the door.
Okay, I have a question then, uh, just to follow up on that. If, uh, since he did the original repairs and no one was, um, happy with them. Is it something that he can adjust at the twenty-eight hundred? With considering we just spent a thousand dollars on it in October?
I think this was.
Is this more?
I think this would have been included in the original repair, but it didn't happen. It, this, I don't believe is a fault of Mr. Bailey.
Okay, I'm just throwing the question out.
No, I'm just saying, I think this is not what was originally planned or didn't happen. Yeah.
Okay, just, just throwing the question out there.
Appreciate it. This is something.
You know, if we weren't happy with the service, then.
Yeah, no, I don't think this is a service issue.
Thank you, yeah. Zach, did you have your hand up? Whose hand did I see? That was Zach. Justin, was, was your hand up? I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, uh, Mary, I didn't quite hear how much money you said that we had in the maintenance budget for this.
What we have left in this year's budget for that is forty-seven hundred dollars right now.
Okay.
So the twenty-eight hundred you're talking about, there's more than enough to cover that.
Thank you, okay. Anything else?
Um, we have a chat comment from Robert that the original repair was focused on carpentry issues, which is true. If you knew the door, the bottom half had damages, you. Pretty much we were sending heat outside and air conditioning outside. So those repairs were done in the first repair.
No, he did a great, great job repairing that.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, the. Uh, funding for the restoration of the doors.
A second.
Okay, roll call. Gotcha. Roll call, trustee Liken.
Like I buy.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay. Great. Uh, the next item, um, village hall meeting room. Uh, for looking at the AV capabilities and. Few things that are going to be up, updated and upgraded and.
Yes, in looking at, um, we've had one vendor out to take a look at the room after talking with the town. Um, trustee Lightgive came in, we reviewed what our needs are with bringing. Our virtual meeting into our in-person meeting, which I would point out is very popular. As we still have, it's nine attendees at our meeting right now and we were as high as thirty-one people in this meeting tonight. So that's far more than we have ever seen in person unless we've had a really hot topic. So I think that's great. We are reaching village residents, that's what the board wants to do. Um, with doing that, we had someone come in and a couple of the suggestions is a large screen TV, a new sound system. There's a lot of things that are. I don't want to say perks, but they really, if we're going to upgrade the room to be able to do this and do it proper, we should do it all at once. Um, trustee Lightgive, do you want to comment on what we discussed?
Um, sure, I, I really appreciate, um, Dorothea, your help in, in putting together, uh, this information and these quotes. It's, it's really a different ballgame than when you're talking on Zoom from home, uh, to get the acoustics in, in a conference room to work out. Um, and it's really a matter for, I, I think, a professional firm, um, as, as Dorothy has been speaking with to, um, prepare recommendations. And, and I agree with the, um, uh, with whatever so far.
Well, this will be, um, as we move closer to opening the meeting room. Um, something hopefully we'll be able to jump on quickly and put the proper funding in place because I think this is essential for the board. As I said, we're still gathering quotes, so. It, it's, it'll be, I'd like to say awesome when it's all done. I think there'll be better sound in the room. Overall for everybody and the visual for the virtual will be great. So we'll keep you appraised and hopefully soon we'll have something for you to look at.
Yeah, that, thank you. Thanks for that and thanks, um, also, uh, to Justin for chiming in and with your technical background. That's really helpful. Um, you know, why don't we, Mary, do you want to do your report? Oh, you're, you're muted, I'm sorry.
Yep, I can do the report.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on one second. Um, I think we're starting out with Brooklyn, uh, for the vouchers. If he's still.
Brooklyn. Oh, he's muted.
Here he comes.
Oh, it, it's a process. I gotta elevate it right now.
Oh.
Brooklyn was doing a little bit too much yesterday, so I gotta, gotta get it back together, try to get out there with the kids and, uh. We're glad we didn't have any video cameras out there, let's just say that.
Oh, boy, well, thanks for hanging in there.
Uh, just a heads up, if I do cut out, that's because my laptop died, I actually left my charger at work, so. Um, we have a large group of vouchers as we attempt to pay as many bills as we can before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, which is, um, six one, um, so this voucher has a total. Of forty-three vouchers totaling thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, this one does include our board member payouts for the year. It also has a few lawyer fees. Six forty-two, which is Osborne and Reed. We also have, uh, Zoglin at six fifty-seven. And Hoxton Russ at, uh, six sixty. Are there any questions I need to vote? I see Lily's hand is up.
Yes, um, I did not receive the voucher for, um, Zoglin. So.
Uh, Lily, that one went out earlier.
Oh, it did, so, yes, it didn't go in, okay.
So, well, there was probably where this, the confusion is. Mindy had billed us out for twenty-one hundred dollars. And so there was some question about why there was a bill of twenty-one hundred dollars. So Dustin. Leester followed up on that and he adjusted, talked to her, they, she adjusted the bill down to the flat fee of sixteen hundred. So, uh.
And he approved that, so that's good.
He approved that, that did go through, um, beginning of May, so I'm sorry if I.
Right. Now I remember.
To you again.
Okay, I remember that good. And the others, uh, the H P B portion was approved by, uh, Bill. And I hope that the trustees took a few moments to check over, um, the Hoxton Russ.
Thank you. Great. Any other comments?
Lily, I, what did Lily just say about the Hoxton Russ? Is that six sixty? Is that voucher number six sixty for seven ninety-three? Is that the one you're talking about?
Um, it, it, okay.
That would be six sixty, seventy-nine thirty-three dollars. It's an April billing.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion, we approve the vouchers as presented. Is there a second?
Can I hold it one second?
I was so close.
You were, and then I, then I just blew it for you and for Brooklyn. I'm sorry, Brooklyn. Going over the vouchers, I noticed that we did not include, um, Audrey Johnson for her historian stipend of five hundred dollars. So in addition to the vouchers that you do have before you, um, I'm requesting a five hundred dollar. Stipend approval for Audrey, uh, changing their voucher total to thirty-nine thousand, four fifty-nine, ninety-six. It's all yours, Brooklyn.
Okay, and, uh, I make the motion amended, um, as presented.
A second. Lanfear.
Okay, roll call, trustee Lightgive.
Like I buy.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Someone needs to change their battery in their smoke detector. Is that you, Brooklyn?
Yeah, I mean, you keep hearing it be.
Yeah.
I know.
It's a, it's the back of hole moving.
Yeah, probably, okay.
We're burying bodies somewhere. My God.
Oh, my God. It's late.
I know.
We're getting punchy, alrighty.
Yes, we are, okay. Thank you, Brooklyn. I appreciate that. And moving forward. I have included, um, Monroe County sales tax check came in, uh, this past week. And that total was a hundred forty thou, a hundred forty thousand, oh eighty-one fifteen. Which brought our year-end total to five hundred fifty-three thousand, eight thirty-nine oh five. Against a budget of four hundred fifty-six dollars, four hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars. Which meant that we were ninety-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-two oh five over budget. Uh, for money received and that's like a huge plus. We're looking for a forty-two thousand dollar difference and we got twice as much back, so I'm. Um, thrilled. When I talked with Monroe County regarding sales tax on another issue when, that we were addressing through, earlier in the. Month, um, they said there was no way they could ever predict. With the sales tax, it's been extremely volatile. The first two months of this quarter that we got the hundred forty-four. Uh, were coming in extremely low. High, so that really helped us out, as did, uh, the other numbers throughout the. Um, fiscal year stayed pretty much in line what, what we had historically speaking, so we did not get. Really wailed with the, um. With, with a, a lower tax, uh, sales tax amount. The only place where it did hit us was in August of twenty twenty. Where we were about thirty thousand dollars short, short of what we would have had. So, uh, the bottom line to that is that we did do diligence in budgeting and reflecting. At least twenty-five percent down from what our income would have been. And it did pay out for us in the long run where we were blessed in the end within ninety-two thousand dollars. So I just wanted to share that with the board. Um, like she had said to me, um, nobody could have predicted what, what was. It was just that crazy of a year for them. So, it was just.
Good news, yes.
It's just informational.
Yes, Justin has his hand up, yes.
Thank you, and, uh, Mary, it's, it's great news about the, uh, the sales tax coming in, um, over budget. And, uh, I, I was looking at the numbers and, and trying to update my, uh, my sheet of, of how this affects, affects the, um. Uh, unrestricted fund, um, and it seems like the, um. Based on the percent of appropriations, we're still at around eleven point three percent based on the, um, uh, A nine oh nine, I guess I was looking at. And, um, uh, the, uh, the total appropriations, um, in A nine sixty. Are those the, the right, um, the figures to be looking at for the, uh, for the appropriations and the, um.
At the end of the year, yes.
Yeah.
The nine oh nine and what was the other one, nine sixty?
Eight nine sixty, the appropriations.
Those are the appropriations.
Okay, so then it looks like we're, we're ending.
Well, the, the nine sixty is the budgeted amount. So that, and the nine oh nine is what we actually had at the beginning of the year here. Where, where you're looking at paperwork and it says one eighty-one, one seventy-five, basically. Um, the expenditures. Well, as long as we're talking about this, I'm going to roll right into the, uh, the general fund trial balance because that's where your question is sitting. And if you go to the trial balance on, under budgetary accounts and expenses, under expenditures, A five twenty-two. There's a figure of twelve oh nine, seven seventy-five. That is the, the actual expenditures. The estimated revenues is the five ten. Um, flipping over to the next page, the estimated. Uh, budget for appropriations was a one five ninety-nine eight fifteen. So, uh, we are under. Um, by three hundred thousand dollars there. As far as spending money, so they, it's a good thing. Um, and the, up, and the revenues, it's kind of hard to discuss a little bit of this because. These, this is just budgetary, it's what we're going out to estimate versus what we actually brought in. You know, and we're trying to take in all the trends, so it's, um, I mean, this is just kind of giving you a picture in time at the end of April. Um, so the revenues we budgeted for one million, five ninety-nine, eight fifteen. And we are coming in this month at the end of April at one four. Sixty-five, eight eighty-eight point ninety-three. So if, just theoretically speaking, without going into all the calculations you did. Because this took me a lot just to get me here today. Um, if we skip over, let's see, it'll be a few pages to the very, and last page of the. The very last page of the general fund, and I'll just sit down it quickly. Hold on, if I could find it. It's an, it's called analysis of unreserved fund equity. If you found that, it's about another one, two. Three, four, about six, six, seven pages behind the one that we were just looking at. That shows you the fund balance that we had started out at, on June first. So when they closed, when we closed the books and we reopened it, we had a hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-four cents. To start the year out. Um, plus and minus our revenues and expenses of, as of April thirtieth. We have an, a nine oh nine, basically, of forty thirty-six, nine eighty-four, forty-six. That's what it looks like right now. That's what it looks like right now. That is not a true number uh, by the time they get all done. But where I was going with this. On the next line where it says plus unearned revenues, it says we were guesstimating another hundred thirty-three, four thirty to meet the budget. Just with the sales tax figure, which is a hundred forty K, we're gonna be over that figure. And where it says unexpended um, appropriations, the three ninety oh thirty-nine ninety-nine, we're gonna be under that. So it's. Kind of all sifted out in the end. The nine oh nine and the year end part of the process will be. By um, other things like employee benefit. For um, like uh, personal time and vacation time, that sort of thing that will affect this balance. Also, the due to due froms, which is uh, like a bridge between all the accounts. There's about a hundred thousand in between there. So however, they take care of it. That's one report. I don't do it all. Um, I just make sure it balances. That that's it. So that's also gonna affect the bottom line in the end. But the way I'm looking. Now, May is not really a big heavy-duty month for the most part. I think once things are sifted out, and I'm gonna go on the low side here. I think we may end up with a fund balance of maybe another fifty or sixty thousand to add to this. Which would only help us out because we're trying to build up that twelve to fifteen percent is where you're going with it, correct?
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah. So that's, that's what I'm hoping for. But. What we end up with on five thirty-one and then we're the. Clean us up and, you know, make everything right for us, reflect it properly. Also adjust that balance a lot with that. I can't even tell you what that is. But I'm, I'm guessing, just from the what I'm seeing, that it, we might end up with maybe another fifty, sixty. I'm just hoping. But um, we'll see what happens. So does that answer all your?
Thank you very much. That, that sounds good. And I appreciate your analysis. Thank you, Mary.
Problem. Did, did anybody else have a question in that?
That was helpful. Thank you.
Let me move on then, because I just want to touch a little bit on what I do have in the April numbers here for everybody. Just to give you um, a placeholder of where we're at with one month to go. All right, on uh, general fund detail of revenues, under Monroe County Sales Tax, which is A eleven twenty. Budget was four fifty-six, three fifty-seven. We had four thirteen, seven fifty-seven. We have a check coming in in May. For the one forty, and that's gonna, the, what we needed was the forty-two, six hundred to meet the budget. So we're exceeding that by another fifty thousand with the um, overage of ninety-seven. So we're good there. Most of these categories on the, on the uh, revenue side, I'm, I have. Very pleased with is where we fell out for the year. Under parking tickets, twenty-six, ten. We're gonna, uh, this is where our shortfall is, where it's reflecting our pandemic issues. We're coming, gonna be coming up with thirty-three hundred in there instead of the six thousand we were predicting because nobody was. Being in the stores. So parking wasn't an issue. If you remember, Pittsburgh was a ghost town. So that, that's reflect, a little reflective of that. Also, into the next category, under sales of equipment. Account A two six six five, we were estimating a trade-in of, I don't know, Zach's still on? He could tell you.
Oh, he, yeah, he just. Yeah.
We just purchased a, a piece of equipment and we, what our intention was, was to take. Uh, I think it was another Kubota. I can't remember now. And take it to auction and that price, that would bring us approximately sixteen thousand dollars. Well, what ended up happening. Was that Zach used um, the equipment against the equipment we bought, so a trade-in. And so that money is not reflected in here. It just reflects in the lowered expense. When I get to it, I'll mention of that again. So that's that. On the next page, A three oh oh five mortgage tax. We are, we typically get two payments, one in December, one in June. So the one that's reflected in here is the twenty-five, five eighty-three against a budget. Of eighteen thousand five hundred. When we were doing the budgeting. We lowered a lot of the revenues in anticipation of people not going anyplace, not shopping. Not doing anything, you know, uh, in that regard. So just enough to kind of get by. So when the check came in for twenty-five thousand, it exceeded our budget in one shot. We should get another check that typically is around thirteen thousand dollars, twelve and change um, in June. So we are right on target for what we would have normally uh, received in any other given year. So that worked out well. Under chips, we had spent the money for chips. Uh, for Village Grove and the um, and the truck that we purchased. So that was. For, for us, basically. Um, thank you to the state. Under five oh three one, on the same page, we have um, modified budget of fifty-four thousand four hundred. That's another sort of gifted entry that did not have to come against uh, taxpayer dollars. We had money left over from the Village Grove project from a few years ago. Um, unfortunately, we could not apply that to another road. Because it is bond specific as to which roads you are using. It gotta be designated in the original. Agreement for the bond. So what we did is we took the money and. Uh, transferred into the general fund to pay off the bond. So the bond monies for the bond monies and that with that. Uh, monies going out, it will leave us about another nine thousand dollars left in that bond. Which in this year's budget is being applied to next year's bond payment. So um, it just makes it a little bit easier on the, on the. Pocket for the taxpayer. All right, moving on to any questions with revenues? Nope. All right, I'm going quick here. Onto the expenditures. Big change in the expenditures was under insurance expense and that was A fourteen, ten point forty-one on. The pa- on the page one, we had a budget of fifty-six thousand. We ended up uh, spending thirty-five, five twenty-eight. With a balance of twenty thousand left in the category and that was due to. Several claims and stuff that we don't have in this year's budget that we did have in years prior. And so that adjusted all of it. We had a new provider also, uh, New York State Insurance Fund. I think um, I'm not getting confused here. Um, but anyway, it helped us out in the long run. So it was a big, big help here. Moving on from there, um, the other. As, as you're going through there, I, if you notice, there's a bunch of accounts on the far right-hand side that have negative balances. All of which need to be uh, covered to make, be made positive. I'm just borrowing from Peter to PayPal in the very end. But in any, and one of those is fourteen, ten point forty-two, which is the advertising. It's for our legal exp- uh, legal. Ads that go into the paper. Um, we had a budget of three thousand. We spent forty-six at the end of April. So I'm needing at least sixteen hundred in that category to cover the expense. But that was due to the buyout. Is that correct?
That was, yes, the switch that we discussed. From going from the local paper to the Democrat Chronicle running the legal ads for the Brighton Pittsburgh Post.
More expensive. Yeah.
It skyrocketed the cost. I mean, well, it was just crazy. So. Um, like I said, I have to, these are things that I have to get uh, cleaned up. Let's see. Nothing else on here. Going through um, the law lines. Were all, we were pretty much in line with the budget. Is, except for a couple of. Places and I, I can't remember what, oh, I do know what happened. We had um, some quotes from Jeff. Because we got a PCP one in there. And I think the statement, I think I showed this to you, Alisa, in the very beginning. Had some quotes that said it should be taken care of by last year May and it ended up. Falling through and ended up having to be fought and whatever. So anyway, long story short, we're short six thousand dollars. In this one category. And um, eighteen hundred dollars in the union and general labor category. But I'd like to go back to the category just above that, which is fourteen twenty point forty-one. And that's the Hudson litigation. We had a budget of fifty thousand dollars in there. Uh, currently, we spent through April, spent thirteen one oh seven fifty, leaving us thirty-six thousand eight ninety-two in a line. In May, we had approximately another five thousand dollars. That were applying against this line. So that's leaving us still a balance of thirty-one thousand nine hundred. After those entries are taking place. And what I would like to do, if at all possible, and the prior administration had talked about this, that if we had money left over in Hudson Mine. We would like to make a payment out of about twenty-five thousand to Hudson Ross. In addition to what we are paying on the um, agreement that we have with them. To help reduce our debt that much quicker. So I will need a motion for that at the end, but let me go through this first. If, and they'll give you guys some time to think about it too. So it'll be twenty-five thousand dollars hitting this line and uh, going strictly to, to the debt. Also, um, we will have another payment that we need to do uh, on June first. So that will be another motion. So that's, that is this page. Moving on. Under buildings, A sixteen twenty point forty, sixteen twenty point four is Village Hall. And that's where I had a budget of six thousand. We spent twelve ninety-three, which was part of the cost for the door to begin with. Uh, leaving us with a balance of forty-seven oh seven. So the twenty-eight hundred that you were talking about earlier would come off against this line. So that's it. Under special items, nineteen thirty point four F O P V settlement. And the Hudson Agreement. Both of these are uh, three-year agreements. So on June first, we have to make another payment out for the F O P V um, agreement for thirty-three, one sixty-six, sixty-six. And then again, on the Hudson Ross one, it is um, per budget twenty-five thousand one hundred. So um, I will need a motion for those two. So that I don't have to call the board to another meeting by Friday. So if I could have that, but again, I'll leave, leave that until the end. All right, let me see, going through here quickly. Just for little highlights. All right, under. Uh, Village Grove fifty twenty point four, the street repair costs is thirty-six thousand five sixty-seven ninety-six. This was money that was paid, um, paid out. Uh, from chips. Chips cover this road re- uh, road reconstruction. So that was uh, helpful to the taxpayer. Um, fifty-one ten point two equipment. We had a budget of fifty-eight thousand. The equipment cost is thirty-four, six fifty-six. Leaving us a balance there of twenty-three forty-three. The difference here was um, the trade-in. Instead of having it both to auction and collect like sixteen thousand for it or thereabouts, we have no idea. We had a trade-in value applied against the equipment that we purchased. So it reduced our expense instead of having it. Be an income item. Okay. Fifty-one forty-two point four under snow remove. We had a nine thousand dollar budget. And in tonight's abstract, the board approved a payment out to the town for forty-one, forty-three, fifty. Which is coming under budget by at least half. Which is, thank you, Jesus. Um, let me see what else on this page. Um, nothing, I think. Nothing. Events and security loads. Oh, all right, that one's fine. It's not a big problem. I made notes to myself as I was going through this. So. Okay, under drainage, eighty-five forty point one. We had a huge sinkhole out front of the Village Hall driveway, if you may remember. And it came in at this hefty bill that no one was anticipating. Anyway, long story short, we were gonna, we were searching for where we were gonna get the money from. And as it turns out, thank you, God, again. Um, the money was able to be covered by the funds that we did receive through the budget. Without having to go in and break our one C D that, or one uh, reserve that we had left over. And the general fund. So uh, that worked out well to our advantage. I don't have to go through doing anything there. On the last page, under debt service bond anticipation notes, we have the fifty-four four hundred. Between uh, interest and, and expense. Um, and that is the fifty-four thousand that I brought in from the bond fund from um. Monies that we have left over from the road project. So again, that's money that we didn't have to come up with uh, through. Taxpayer dollars. And I think that's really it for the board out of any, out of that. Questions? No questions? I'm moving on. All right, and again, I went through the general fund, unreserved fund balance. The difference between revenues and expenses. As of four thirty is two hundred fifty-five thousand eight oh nine fifty-two. Um, hopefully, we have a number that looks similar to this, May thirty-first, um, and that will help our bottom line tremendously. So that's all good. Right now, we're in great shape. So I, I feel very good about the whole thing. Moving on, the sewer fund bu- budget, there is really not much to talk about there. Nothing on the trial balance unless anybody has questions about any of the numbers. Um, I will go back to other receivables, G three sixties sewer rents receivable. The number right there is not correct. I still have to fix it. But it, uh, we had just put through about twenty-six thousand dollars worth of unpaid sewer rents. Onto the taxes. So that should be, and that number is particularly high. Usually, it's about twelve to fifteen thousand for the most part. But um, I think this year with the pandemic and everything else, and we did give them the extra time to pay it and. We're out of time. You know, we gotta, we gotta move this on. So that's that one. Under the revenues, we've got one sixteen eight oh six fifty-three. That's for all the sewer rents and whatever. There will, there's still another billing that needs to be um, added to this number, which is gonna be about the, around the same. Hundred twenty thousand when it goes out in August. Because we bill six months prior. The period needs to be reflected into this books, into this fiscal year, even though it's going out next fiscal year. It's all kind of crazy, but that's how it is. So um, the revenue here will be inflated by that entry at year end. It's just that. Under the expenses, I already moved the monies to the reserves out of this one. So there's nothing else on here really of any. Worthy discussion. I'm giving you guys a break. All right, and the sewer fund, unreserved. Fund balance analysis here. We started out the year with six hundred seventy-two, one forty-seven, sixty. With the revenues and expenses, it's telling us we've got six forty-eight to twenty-nine ninety-seven and they're expecting six seventy, six forty-seven at the end. That's gonna be a, a number that's gonna be relatively close because I still have to book in the extra revenues. And this is the uh, dollar amount. Um, that is gotta be left on our radar because we do need to. We do need to do something about this balance. It's too high. We need to move a, a bunch of money into another reserve or whatever. But in order for us to move it, there really needs to be a plan that is constructive and solid. That um. You know, the, the village could go forward with. It should be something for. Um, long-term. Disaster relief, so to speak. Um, so I would take at least three hundred fifty thousand off of this figure and put it into a, a. Um, so I would take at least three hundred fifty thousand off of this figure and put it into a a a reserve of that sort. But before we do that, there should be a plan that um is addressed, and then we could, you can move forward with it. All right, so that's that one. Um, capital improvement fund right now has um fund balance of sixty-three four fifty-six sixty-six. This is all gonna change next month because out of this money, we're taking out the fifty-four thousand four hundred for the bond. And then whatever's left, the nine thousand, whatever, uh will be applied to uh to the bond monies that we need to repay next year. So that's already built into the new budget. So that's that. There are no revenues to speak of on this bond. It's just interest, so that's sixteen seventeen bucks that we've earned on that uh for the year. Woo-hoo. Uh, not much in uh expenditures either. And like I said, the fifty-five thousand um under that analysis of unreserved fund equity is going out next. This month, it's already gone, but not reflected in the four thirty number. The last page of this is the trust and agency, which is really our payroll account. That is just um in and out account, whatever we have in deductions, that's what gets recorded, whatever we spend out, it's also recorded. So this is really not a so-called working account for uh the village board. It's just payroll. So that said, any questions on the April numbers? I know you, the board hasn't had a whole lot of time to review since I sent it out this afternoon. Um, but if you have questions, shoot. If you feel comfortable enough and want to make a motion to accept these numbers, that's great. If not, we can wait on it until you have a chance to really look at it, whatever works best for you.
That, thanks, Mary. Any thoughts from the board? Do you want to review it a little more, or is there a motion to be made? The hour is getting late, I think.
It's okay, we can bring this back and um just for board approval for the April numbers next, next meeting.
Okay, I I thought that maybe just so people have a little bit more opportunity.
We have time to look at it.
Yeah, thanks, Mary.
The other thing I do need, though, um if at all possible, as I said to you earlier when we were going through the numbers, there's a lot of negatives. So I need to pay uh, you know, Rob Peter to pay Paul to make the nu- numbers positive. And so the budget transfers that I have listed in here are are just that. There, there's no other rhyme or reason behind it. I'm just trying to cover the negatives uh to make them positive to move forward. So for this, I would like to have a motion if possible.
So moved.
Okay, Lily.
Second.
J K.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Lightkid.
Like it, bye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Um, okay, so I just have the couple little things that I need to um go back with. And that is um I need to have a budget entry, uh and that's just to increase the budget lines to reflect um the additional chips money to pay for the new Kubota RTV that is, has been ordered in April, is looking to be delivered like June second or or sixth, something like that. And that piece of equipment was around twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, so that's, I'm moving again. Chips is paying for this, it's not taxpayer debt. Um, the only thing I messed up in here when I did it on my treasures report sheet was that it should be a debit to thirty-five oh one and a credit to five one one oh two because I'm increasing um the budget amount and not the actual expense. So if I could have a motion for that, that would be great.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, just a trustee Lightkid.
Like it, bye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, I got budget transfers, I got the amendment. Um, I would also like to have two more motions. One for Hudson Ross for the additional twenty-five thousand uh to pay down the debt uh to be applied against our um twenty-twenty-one expenses. There was the, there was where I had said we get fifty thousand in the category, we're left with about thirty-one thousand. I would like to take twenty-five of that and apply it to the debt money if the board would go along with it. So I think I need a motion for that one.
So moved.
Like it, second.
Roll call, trustee Lightkid.
Like it, bye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much. And then the last motion that I need is for the two agreements that have to go out June one. And one is again for Hudson Ross for twenty-five thousand one hundred, which is in the budget for the new year. And the other one is for the FOPV agreement, and that agreement number was thirty-three thousand one sixty-six sixty-six. Well, that is a, sure, I lost the page that had it on it. This is not right. I think that's what it was.
I think that's it.
Thirty-three one sixty-six sixty-six, I think. Yeah, I don't know what I did with it. It's in here somewhere.
I don't know why it's sticking in my mind, but it is.
We can just say the outstanding agreement.
It's like the six.
Yeah, we'll say the outstanding agreement amount, that's a a good way, so.
Yeah, that would be fine. So I think that those two would be awesome.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, trustee Lightkid.
Like it, bye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Thank you, awesome. Um, I just have one quick question or reminder to Renee to sign the docu-sign if you haven't done that already.
I didn't get it.
You did not get it?
In email.
All right, I will talk to the bank tomorrow and we'll make that get that taken care of.
Okay, because then that will move us forward for being signers on the account.
Yeah.
Okay, um, that's it for me. Thank you so much, I appreciate it all.
Thank you so much, really well done, and thank you, Brooklyn, and I hope your ankle feels better.
Yeah, I told him to stay home tomorrow and stay off it.
Oh, yes.
You know.
Not a good thing.
No, I've been there, done that, it's, it hurts, it hurts. So it's up to you, Brooklyn, but you know, we're telling you to stay home and enjoy it. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks again. Okay.
Can I do the clerk's report while we're here?
Yep.
Okay, um, the first thing I need is authorization for the mayor and I to sign the tax warrant. There is an error on there. Apparently, my brain wasn't clicking on all cylinders when I wrote it. And in the end, you'll see it says two thousand nineteen and actually should be twenty-twenty-one. We're just going back in time, pre-pandemic, seemed like an idea for me. But either way, with that correction, I'm asking for authorization for us to sign the tax warrant for this coming budget year.
So moved.
Second, Stetzer, second.
Roll call, trustee Lightkid.
Like it, bye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
The next thing I'm asking is approval to, for the code supplement update. This is the one where I've explained, we do this on a yearly basis to save costs with updating the code. So this is reflective of twenty-twenty local laws. So if I can just have approval for that to get those codified, that would be terrific.
So moved.
Like it.
Thank you.
Okay.
He got you by a hair, Lily.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, trustee Lightkid.
Like it, bye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes, that's it for the clerk.
Okay, did you uh what, just want to cover the village masking policy? You know, just some states on things that have been going on, yeah.
Yeah, um, Mayor Plummer and I attended a Nikon conference. Um, as everybody's aware, some changes came down from the governor and last week that affected masking. So one of the things we're bringing to the board is a change in the masking policy for the office. Right now, we had, request everybody wear a mask coming in. We went, wanted to reflect their signage to be um. How did we put that?
Oh, I had it written, I don't even have the sheet in front of me.
And my brain's misfiring, but we wanted to reflect um if you're fully vaccinated and can provide proof, you can come in without a mask in some type of language like that. If you're not that fully vaccinated, you will need to wear a mask.
If you, or if you don't have proof of it, if you.
If you don't have proof, yes.
Yeah, it was really more about showing the proof and um.
Right.
This is, this is Nikon policy that they.
This, they, they recommended, you know, having some kind of policy. This is something that needs to be set by the board. And pretty much, it should be reflective as with employees. If you're fully vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask. If you're not, you need to ma- wear a mask if you're within six feet of another employee or the public. So that's what, that's what we're asking the board to approve, is that policy.
And just very quickly, um, you know, people are concerned about, you know, HIPAA, you know, the the health uh uh, you know, policies that you're not allowed to, you know, ask somebody or or make make those determinations. You're, you're not allowed, we're not, uh, we are allowed to, um. What's the word? We're not allowed to ask anything more than whether or not you're vaccinated. We can ask, though, because this is a public safety issue for our municipality.
You just can't ask why.
Correct, you can't go any further than yes or no.
That's it.
That's all we care about is yes or no.
And that's important also for all of us just moving forward as trustees in terms of how we interact with people. Um, are you vaccinated? Yes, no, okay.
And ongoing with the room with reopening, it is beho- it behooves us to wait to con- till we reopen because right now we would have to look at, it might help our spacing a little, but it really isn't solving the issue because then we would have to section out people that are vaccinated from unvaccinated. And I think we really don't want to get into that question, and we might not need to do that if, what is the thoughts is mayor can say they were thinking this how, these things are fluctuating, and they see more leniency coming up in the next few weeks to a month where we might be able to reopen the room without even asking the question.
Yeah, a lot of municipalities are sort of in, we're all sort of in this little wait-and-see mode. I mean, the town is as well because, you know, their meeting room um is, you know, down below, below grade in their their the basement of the building. So they're kind of, you know, holding off a little bit as well because the restrictions are keep, you know, they're they're being lifted every week as sort of things are changing. So um, you know, I agree with Dorothea. I think, you know, if we just just wait maybe another little bit, I think we'll we'll be in good shape instead of making the investment in all the plexiglass and how we're gonna quarantine, not quarantine, but, you know, certain people in an area and other people in another area. Um, we have the capability, obviously, of streaming our meetings, and so we're still pretty good. Yep.
So if I, if the board is in agreement of this, the policy changes we're asking for, I just would ask for a motion and a second for us to make that change.
So moved. Oops, there we go. That's amazing. Is there a second?
Like it, second.
Okay, roll call, trustee Lightkid.
Like it, bye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Great. And did we need an executive session? We did.
Uh, do we need, well, were there member items?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Totally forgot about it, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, yeah.
Can we do member items?
Yeah, yeah, Lily. Um, Steve, did, did, and Berkeley, you guys are, you're, anything with you guys or? Do you want to say good night?
One of my member items might involve Steve.
Oh, hold on, Steve.
It's just a heads up.
Oh, 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 sure, okay.
Is that okay? So I'll start with that one.
Sure.
Uh, and that is because we're, we have approved, obviously, uh, a special use permit uh for an area. Luckily, it didn't uh require a site plan, uh, and I want to know the status of the ticket booth replacement because we're anticipating yet another special use permit. So not tonight, we're too, we're, I look too tired, but I'm saying like it, maybe at the next meeting, we could discuss that, where we stand with that. The status update on that one. Uh, okay, then then I'll proceed with, thank you, Steve. Uh, I'll proceed with the other member items I have. I I have several only because I have not had member items the last three meetings. Um, number one, Monroe County Ethics Board, which exists, I'm requesting that our board send the outstanding requests for um input or comment uh from, that have been sitting with Dorothea for the past two years, since two thousand nineteen. I am requesting that the board send them on to Monroe County. I know that we are anticipating uh forming an ethics uh committee for the village. But until that happens, and I assume that will take some time to interview uh potential candidates and to form a committee and for them to form uh the times that they will meet and their guidelines uh to be brought up to speed, that that will all take time. And so because these have been languishing for such a long time, I am making the suggestion that the board send those outstanding um complaints to Monroe County Ethics to be dealt with. There's another reason I bring that up. And the other, that reason is that if any of the complaints involve current former board members, especially current board members, that uh it would be perhaps unethical for them to be voting on an ethics board uh who would sit on an ethics board if they might be involved in some of the uh complaints that we are holding on to. This would remove that concern because if they, I think they would have to recuse themselves from any vote regarding who would be sitting on that ethics board if they were involved in any of the complaints that have been filed. The second uh uh item I would like to ask the board to consider is public comments sec- text section, an actual set um policy regarding commenting during a meeting that we have a section set aside or a time set aside during the meeting for public comment. Um, I think that the Zoom has been great, and it's great that we have this additional um involvement from our citizens. But at the same time, it's somewhat limiting and frustrating. Uh, they were trying to raise hands and put in chats, and it's not as personal, and we're not getting the input uh that we would get if we were sitting in a meeting room. So I'd like to see what we can do to address that.
Can I ask a question about that, Lily? Because there used to be, um, I remember, you know, and I believe you were trustee then as well, a a section such as that, and then it was discontinued. Do you know why?
I think uh one of the reasons why it might have been discontinued is that uh there wasn't a time limit. We should have put a time limit on the public comment uh section. I think one way we could handle it is to ask people to call Village Hall or email Village Hall ahead of a meeting requesting uh an opportunity to speak, uh for instance. That might be one way so that we have an idea of how many people would like to speak. But I'm feeling a a lack um of, because of the Zoom setup and uh of more engagement, more um. I know that that they're commenting, but not everyone sees those comments, and I certainly don't see them when when we're meeting because I'm not distracted by what's happening on the computer over here. I'm I'm trying to concentrate on what is being said, and I'm missing, as I see it afterwards, I'm missing comments that were made that I would have liked to have at least addressed with the person who asked the question. And I'm not, I'm I'm missing that opportunity, and I I'm wondering if others, uh other trustees might be feeling the same. My third is that I would like to go on the record and I would like to have it added to our agenda uh for our next meeting is to address the request that we received from, and I'm sorry that I don't remember the names of the individuals who sent the letters, that we received two requests, one for thin blue line, I think it was, or police matters, they requested a flag or a banner. And the other was from um Irish Heritage for the month of March. And I would like them on the agenda because we received them, and I think we should address them. Um, the fourth item came up just tonight, and I would also like to go on record again is that um with all due respect to my board members, that um I think I'm a fairly reasonable and not um strident individual usually, but I will not sit and be bullied. I will not stand for that, and I will speak up for myself. And I mean no disrespect to this board or our constituents when I do this. So I would like to go on record as saying that I will not sit and take it. I will not. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think you're very right to ask questions, you know, I agree with you. I I I don't like bullying either, I agree. Thank you for that, thank you, yeah. Steve. Oh, you're muted, oh, there you go.
Yeah, um, the other thing I want to say, Lily, if if we're gonna discuss the ticket booth. Yeah, um, the other thing I want to say about Lily, if 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 we're going to discuss the ticket booth, I'd like Jeff to be involved in that because.
Absolutely.
I think he was involved in the whole thing and the cost comparatively to what it was or what the deal was way back when. I had an estimate done by low local contractor and and you're talking, you know, literally three times.
What it. Sure, I understand it's getting worse and worse. I I get that.
Yeah, so it's, um, and while I have you on here, right, you would, I think the mayor and I had had been discussing, I thought. At some point you thought your neighbor had one or something?
Well, yes, there is an individual who lives in the village and I did speak to him again. I did reach out to him again. And he said that he is not prepared at this time to um. To part with the ticket booth. I think if he received a reasonable offer, he might consider it.
Is it the one that used to be down there or is it a different one?
No, it's a different one. It is actually was a trolley station that was originally located on Monroe Avenue. And it and it's um, has all the attributes and it is actually. An intact building uh, with the curved up gables and that ticket door and the whole. The whole thing as close as we can get uh, to the to uh, the actual historic ticket booth. It's not a replica. It's the real deal. So, yeah, it could be a wonderful thing, but we need. The the money from the individual who owes the village for the replacement of the ticket booth. So that we have the money in our hand to go to the individual and say, this is our offer. This is how much money we're able to give you for your ticket booth.
Oh, we're so close.
Great.
There's a ticket booth out there. Okay, yes, Dorothea.
Um, I have chat comments as well. Um, first one is from Mike Reynolds. He says, only half the chat comments read by Dorothea. Appearing on my screen. He is also his hand up and is requesting to talk.
Well, um.
How do we do this?
Well, we're doing member comments. I. Is it about something Lily's? Is it speaking to something that Lily has raised or, you know?
I will reach out to him and ask that question while we get any other.
You know, the hours late, we're just trying to, you know, make sure we're covering things. Or did you have any other member comments, Lily?
I think I said them all. I had four and I said.
Okay, no, no, I just, because I know you had said you had a lot, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds says it is about member comments.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds, you've been allowed to speak.
So Lily suggested uh, that the ethics complaints be forwarded to Monroe County. Uh, I've I've requested that some time ago in writing. I'm asking, I'm suggesting now, Lily, could you put that in the form of a motion? I move that the ethics, the outstanding. Ethics complaints be forwarded to the Monroe County.
No, I I I'd like to speak to that for one second.
Yeah, I'm sorry for interrupting. I have to recuse myself since I filed one of the complaints. Um, so I will, at this point, turn off my video and not participate and join back in when the discussion is closed.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Um. I just think we need to have a little more information at this point. Um, I'm not prepared. To to move on that. We 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 have already put out and have the cut of the deadline is what ends for the resumes to come in.
June first.
Yeah.
So in other words, I think we're kind of working at different odds here. I I I'm not sure. The hours late, um, I don't, I'm not willing to entertain a motion. I think I need more information, frankly. Because just because we say, oh, it goes to the county, uh, the county doesn't always turn things around that fast either. So. I'm not comfortable with that at all. And, you know, trustee Keating isn't here, trustee like us recused. I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay. It's.
Yeah, yes, Lily, yes.
I'm sorry, at some, at some point, I I I think it would be a good idea. Uh, I don't know if it has to happen in executive session. I don't think that it it does. Uh, to have a discussion regarding uh, the ethics committee and in our process going forward. For the reasons that I stated, we may end up, I mean, I know certain trustees are are aware of this. That there are some complaints that we are aware of because we tried to handle them internally. And so that might be something that's also. Um, so we're aware, I don't know how to say this, and there might be others involved, and so we might end up. Uh, struggling for a quorum, but definitely it would reduce the number of trustees who would be eligible. To vote on anything. I'm just.
Um, I I really want to talk with our village attorney about this because, you know, this is, this is something that I think needs to be vetted legally by our attorney.
Okay.
As we move forward. I'm not comfortable with this at all, but, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments on it for sure.
Okay.
I invite Justin back in.
Yes.
You want me to text him? Okay.
Thank, thanks, Renee. Yeah, thank you. Um, any other member items? If the hour is so late, I think.
I I have a a couple, but uh, just to keep you updated, the um, the the bill, the speed limit bill did pass the Senate. We're just waiting for the assembly. Um, the the second, we've been down this road before. It's never passed the assembly. This is new language, so let's, let's hope it it passes. Um, the second thing is, uh, a couple residents asked about the light under the bridge. And I know that we had it in our budget and then Zach already left, so I will, um, I'll have to just address that offline. Um, because we want to know the timeline and the plan for that. And I know the previous mayor mayor worked on that with with Zach. Um, and then the third is there that have we heard anything about a striping meeting for the state street bridge reconstruction? There's supposed to be a discussion about possibly going to ten ten foot lanes. Um, and they, I don't know when they're going to have the restriping meeting or the striping meeting. So just the paint they're going to put on the road and I want to stay ahead of that.
Yeah, let's let's reach out. Let's reach out tomorrow even.
You haven't heard anything. They wouldn't let you and Zach know. Okay, maybe they're not there yet.
Yeah, anything else?
Nope, those are my three.
Well, yes, Justin, sure.
Just a a couple of short items. I was at the PZBA uh, meeting last night as the liaison. Um, and the uh, the matter of substance was the Pittsburgh Panthers event. Um, and that's going to be on June twenty sixth uh, from noon to five PM. So. Uh, if you would like barbecue, I I know that almost no one is hanging out with us at this point in the meeting, but I hope that those who are dedicated barbecue fans. Just as they are village board meeting attendees. Um, so find a Pittsburgh Panther and buy some tickets. Um, second was the issue of temporary permit code updates. Um, and there were a couple of changes that were being suggested. Uh, Justin Fliestra, the PCBA chair had some ideas on those, so I was going to follow up with him. Um, and and just try to get that into uh, some kind of a form that we could at least discuss the the direction to go in to make those changes that are needed. Um, and the last item was one that came up in this meeting. Um, I I wanted to return briefly to um, a a member, I'm sorry, a citizen comment that was made regarding the arboretum. Um, Peggy Brzee commented, and I don't think this was written to the record. Um, and I'm I'm quoting her comment, the Pittsburgh Garden Club has several very talented master gardeners who should have been including included in the site visit. Would hope that the village board would reach out to local talent. And she says the uh, Robert C. Corby Arboretum and Wildlife Preserve is well worth our time and efforts. Um, and I I was also, um, I I had mentioned that I didn't have a lot of time to read the um, the report that was presented, which is very detailed and helpful. Um, uh, since that came in just before the meeting, but I would like to also um, reach out to the the garden club. Um, I don't see any reason not to do that, and I think it would be good to have more voices in the conversation since there's a lot of stake and it's a complex issue. Um, a- and also I uh, recently spoke with Patty Love. Um, who I believe advised the town on their side of the park. Um, and I would also like to reach out to her. Um, also potentially, uh, I'm not, uh, I'm not a master gardener or any sort of a gardener myself. Um, but it seems like some of what we're talking about is a forestry issue and I wonder if someone from the DC. Um, would be able to advise in in that capacity. There's a, um, you know, a list of partner foresters and and other people who have experienced that area. So. Um, my my proposal is that um, I would go and uh, reach out to the garden club. Uh, reach out to Patty Love and and see if we can get more voices in the conversation to go and look at the area to figure out the best course of action.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the Cornell Extension Master Gardener Program. Um, and I'm and I'm glad about the Pittsburgh Garden Club and I actually think that. Um, they would be really helpful with, you know, the entire sustainability initiative, you know, frankly. Um, I'm also a member of the Rochester Garden Club as well, so there's there's a lot of resources out there. Um, the the master gardeners, the Cornell Extension has tremendous resources relative to forestry. Um, I also think that they bring um, a a macro lens. To a parcel like this because they've done so much work regionally uh, like this. Um, that is, is um. I think will will stand us in good stead, you know, in the long term for planning and they could, they know people. They bring in resources just as you were saying. So, um, rather than scattershot, you know, I I think. Sticking with master gardeners, whether it's through the Pittsburgh Garden Club or other members of our community that are have those backgrounds, we have tremendous resources. I have always said that. I believe in that. These are all people that are stakeholders. So I think in many respects, we're saying the same thing. Um, so I think that's all good and we'll, we can move that forward for sure.
Okay.
Um, any other member items?
Well, just to to follow up on that, so then is uh, as a next uh, item, because it sounds like there's already some opinions coming in and. And voices in the conversation of what to do with that area. Um, should I go ahead and talk to the garden club, you know, and and also.
I'll reach out to them directly because the the other master gardener, you know, the Stacy Sheddin, who you met tonight. And Sandy G. and any, they probably already know each other. Do you know what I mean? You know, so this could be. It's just expanding that collaborative effort through the master gardener connection. Um, it's a very powerful circle. I I'm a certified master gardener through the Florida Extension Program. It's it's a really powerful horticultural community. Um, so I think that I'm just saying we're not work, you know, we're working in the same same direction, you know, they all, I'm sure they all know each other, to be honest with you.
Yep, yep, I'm sure. So you'll reach out to uh, to the garden club then for their input before the the next meeting and should I reach out to Patty Love since I've got.
I'd like to hold off on that and I'd like to speak with you offline about that. Um, there's some additional information that's come in as well and so. Just in terms of uh, where we are, I think with the master gardeners and the um, continuity with them, I think. Um, it's really more to um, our advantage to move forward in that in that way. Um, so I'll I'll give you a call tomorrow. We can talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, let's see, quick, quick item for me. Um, Zach and I met with Nice Dot. Uh, to talk about the uh, light, temporary light and um, they have already reprogrammed the light. Uh, to give, I think it's a five second head start for pedestrian crossing. What this means is that the light is um, red all the way around. Uh, for all the cars, so no one's, you know, moving forward and it gives pedestrians just enough time. To uh, walk across the street. So, and they took care of that pretty quickly. The other thing that they agree to is that they are going to. Freshly paint the crosswalk for for greater visibility. And um, I I I'm not sure, but they they sounded like they were on it, like it might even happen after this holiday. You know, I kind of wish it was now, but you know, at least that we, little small victories, right, Renee?
Yeah, nice work.
Yeah, well, you know, small victories, we're we're trying. Um, they also indicated that the state street bridge is probably going to be done in mid-July. So they're ahead of schedule, um, which is great. Uh.
That's like a month ahead. That's awesome.
Yeah, yes, it's pretty significant, frankly. Um, I did speak with um. A uh, person from the Galasano Sustainability Institute. Uh, they have an energy audit program. Um, the town. Uh, utilize this program, I guess, last year, a couple of years ago at um, for town buildings and um. They're excited about working with us to do a little energy audit on Village Hall to see how we can improve things energy wise. So I think that's kind of great. Um, one last thing, I just want, I want to know, I spoke very briefly with Krista Marzo. Um, Anthony DeMarzo passed away two days ago. Um, so, you know, he was uh, mourning his dad. Um, he wanted to have um, a meeting with two members of each board. Um, similar, I think I sent that out to you in the memo. Um, I really think, and I want to run this by the board, that it should be a public meeting with all the boards. So the public sees whatever his new architect is doing and what the new ideas are. It's a new day, a new start. None of this two people from each board stuff were not at that point. We don't know what he's looking at. He already lost the last two cases in court. And so I think this is a way to just establish sort of a fresh, fresh start. Throwing that out to the board.
I would agree.
I'm just saying, this is something, you know, that we were talking about that he has a new architect and they they're thinking of some new ideas and he said he's very keenly aware. Of mass and scale. Um, so I'm glad after, you know, this length of time, twelve years that he is. And so. Uh, I'll at least think about this. I just wanted to bring this back to the board. This was something that we talked about. Yeah.
Could I just uh, request to clarify? My mind is uh, getting foggy after. So, so the the proposal is is that we would have a public meeting to discuss the the new ideas from the architect?
New ideas? And I said, you know, this isn't a dog and pony show. This is really um, much more. Um, where do you, where are you starting now going forward? You know, your 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 project basically was denied. So what are you looking at now, based on all, you know, the information? Um, from the last court decisions. So, um, and I think really, um. Just rather than just have a few people from the boards, open it up, make it transparent, have the public see what what's going on. You know, that kind of thing. So those are the thoughts, but anyway, everybody think about that. Um. Uh, we were, uh, we did have a couple of items for executive session, but I'd like, um, maybe what we can do, once our next meeting, Dorothea.
June eight. June eight.
June eight. So maybe what we could do is actually hold it an executive session prior to that meeting. Um, you know, if the meeting's at six thirty, maybe we have an executive session starting at five thirty to cover some of these things. It would just be in another week because it's so late. Does that make sense? Anybody?
Are you proposing the setting up a date for the public hearing or public meeting um, with uh. DeMarzo? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, at that, that would be the goal, but I mean, you know, I'm just bringing this back to the board that if we're going to move forward in any fashion with this applicant. Uh, Chris had proposed having two members from each board, the way, remember when Judge Ark did that? And I said. I'm not comfortable with that. If you have a new idea, a new architect. We have all the boards, we open it up to the public and that's our starting point. So that's, that's what I said and and I said, I want to bring this back to the board. So here I am.
Okay, because he's disinclined apparently to make an application to the PCBA and HPP as was requested by the court. He's disinclined to do that. Yeah.
I I I'm just, I'm giving you the information based on what he said, and I think that in in all fairness. If he has a new architect and a new idea, um, then just vet it publicly, you know, you know, will essentially be. I I, you know, I think that's probably the the best way to proceed.
Okay, that's very similar to how they started, um, twelve years ago. They had a public meeting and everybody came and. Sat and listened to their architect's presentation. So. That's the way, yeah, he wants to do it then.
Try to move forward again with a different architect and a different idea. So, you know. Um, and he'd like, you know, he'd like it sooner than later, although, you know, I think now with um. You know, the passing of his dad, I think there's, you know, funeral, you know, there's things going on for his family. So, um. You know, we can certainly maybe come up with a date, a couple of dates. You guys are willing to do that, we can even just, Dorothea, maybe what we can do is to circulate a couple of different dates. In emails to everybody to say, hey, what do you guys think? You know?
Mayor Plummer.
Yeah.
Um, has the uh, planning board and the historic board, historic preservation board, are they open to this?
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I'm literally, this is hot off the.
This is hot off the presses, so we don't know. Okay.
The other boards, um, and say, are you interested in meeting in these dates? This is the 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 thought going forward. Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Fast breaking news. How's that? Yeah. Um, yeah, so maybe that's what we can do and just circulate, you know, the memorandum to to all the boards. And see if we can come up with some dates that that makes sense. Um, but anyway, I just want to. Um, but anyway, I just want to get back, um, because the hour is late and there were a couple of items, um, that we were going to be covering in executive session. But I do think that it may be more practical to have an executive session prior to our next meeting to cover these items when we're all, you know, fresh.
Pressure.
So June, June the 8th.
Yeah, June the 8th. And so, Dorothea, I'm thinking, what, 5:30 executive session?
Okay.
Yeah, she's, well, we're getting the thumbs up over there.
Sure.
Okay, great. Okay, is there anything else? I make a motion, we adjourn.
Lanfear, second. What, did we all say second?
I think we did. Mine was at the end of a yawn though, so I, I forgot to take my button.
All right, trustee Lanfear.
Thought I was on mute.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, I.
Trustee Light Gibb.
Like have I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Clerk, I. Motion passes.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, everybody. Thank you. Okay.